Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'll call back into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District for March 7th, beginning at 7:10 PM. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We'll start our meeting with the opening ceremony. If you'll join Mr. Hibbs in leading us in the pledge. And would you please silence your electronic devices and join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We have a program this evening. I'd like to introduce Mr. Bill Huff, who will introduce our program. Evening, Mr. Huff.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Barron. School Board Superintendent Cavazos. I'm thrilled to present to you tonight a doubleheader. We've had some wonderful performances throughout the year, but tonight, we're going to have two. And the reason we're having two is because these two choirs have been selected to perform at the American Choral Directors Association next week in Dallas. That's like winning the Super Bowl if you're in the choir world. So it's a really big deal. There were 300 choirs that auditioned to get this honor. Nine high school choirs were chosen, and we have two of those nine. So that speaks really fantastic. Performing first will be the Martin High School Chamber Singers, under the direction of Kay Owens and Betsy Clark. They will be performing "It Takes a Whole Village" by Zimko. And following them will be the Arlington High School Choral Varsity Men, under the direction of Dinah Minger and Mason Barlow. Folks, I am thrilled to present to you what I consider two of the finest choirs in the nation. Thank you. It takes a whole village to raise our children. It takes a whole village to raise one child. We all, everyone must share the burden. We all, everyone will share the joy. It takes a whole village to raise one child. We all, everyone must share the burden. We all, everyone will share the joy. Deliver a story. Tin my lord, deliver Daniel. Deliver Daniel, deliver Daniel. Say, tin my lord, deliver Daniel. Then why not every man? Tin my lord, deliver Daniel. Deliver Daniel, deliver Daniel. Tin my lord, deliver Daniel. Then why not every man? He delivered Daniel from the lion's den. Showed him from the belly of the whale. And the Hebrew children from the fiery furnace. Why not every man? Tin my lord, deliver Daniel. Deliver Daniel, deliver Daniel. Tin my lord, deliver Daniel from the lion's den. Why not every man? The wind blow east and the wind blow west. Judgment day. And every soul that never did pray will be glad to pray that day. Tin my lord. Tinkie, tinkie, deliver Daniel. Then why not every man? Then why not every man? Yeah. Deliver us.
Now, I heard it said that some folks tried to deliver themselves from their own pariah slenda of iniquity. But it does stand so. Though we run from that lion, and though we swim fast from that whale. There ain't nothing you can do without the Lord's deliverance. Now testify and sing with me now.
Hallelujah. Say so, Daniel. Deliver us, come what may. You gotta make 'em every day. Every day I say. I set my foot on the gospel ship, and the ship began to sail. Gotta get him there, carry me over onto Canaan's shore. And I'll never go back no more. He got drawn to my lord, I deliver Daniel. Showed him from the belly of the mighty whale. Never did believe it, how we could achieve it. And now I know so well, yeah, yeah, yeah. Tin my lord, deliver Daniel. Deliver Daniel, deliver Daniel. Tin my lord, straight away from the lion's den. Tin my lord, deliver Daniel. Then why not every man? Why not? Why not every man? Every man? Why not? Every man?
Hey, Mr. Huff, did you want to say anything else? Big chance.
Something I didn't mention as I was introducing them a while ago, not only was it a national level competition, we got two of the best in the nation, but it's the first time in the history of this convention to have two groups from the same school district performing. So it's an absolutely amazing thing. I'm looking forward to it. I'm going to go hear them perform next week in the Meyerson on Thursday, and it's going to be exciting for all of us. Fine Arts in Arlington is alive and well. Thank you, guys.
I'm not going to go in action. Dr. Cavazos, come on after the children.
Thank you, President Barron. This time, I'd like to welcome the Education Foundation and their presentation tonight, Kathy Jackson, to give us an update on the foundation, their progress, and their outstanding work for our school district. Kathy?
It's a little hard to be outstanding at something where you're following in those marvelous performances, but that was just a wonderful example of what we're here for. My name's Kathy Jackson. I'm Executive Director for the Arlington ISD Education Foundation. I'd like to present our Executive Vice President, Elizabeth Calvo. She's in charge of fund development, and she's going to introduce you to the directors who could join us.
Good evening, President Barron, trustees, Superintendent Cavazos. Thank you so much for the opportunity to visit with you this evening. We've got some of our board members here today. Barbara Nash, Ann Morris, Mary Cannon, Linda Dybert, and Michael Jarrett. We appreciate, again, the opportunity to visit with you today, and Kathy's going to talk to you a little bit about our programs.
Thank you all so much. Okay. What we do is what, I'm sorry. Our efforts with the Education Foundation are to work every day to help every student every day that they're in a classroom. And we do that several ways. We award grants to fund programs and projects. We partner with other organizations to secure funds, provide professional training opportunities, and we can act as a conduit to secure specified sources of funding that may not be available through other mechanisms. Just so you can see, we have now reached every single campus in the district. Last year, reaching Amos Elementary, that was the final one. So everybody has been touched by an Education Foundation grant, and we hope the trend continues. We have two funding cycles. Classroom project grants are given in the fall. They are capped at $1,000, and every teacher is eligible to apply. In the spring, we give more generous grants. They're called impact grants, typically a $5,000 award, and we look to affect a whole classroom level or a campus with those dollars. What we have in place during this school year right now are 16 classroom project grants affecting almost 4,000 students, 14 impact grants affecting almost 4,500 students. The additional funds we secured were $10,000 through joint fundraising with campuses, mostly at the elementary level, and some restricted funding grants for programs like JK Living, General Motors Green Initiative. And we received one from the Kinder Morgan Foundation, which is implemented this year at Larson Elementary. This is what it looks like on Grant Delivery Day, and we encourage you and anybody from the community to join us. It's the best day to go to a classroom. The teachers are really excited to have funds, and the kids are really excited because they know that their teacher is valuable. He or she has come up with a wonderful idea, and we've given them the money to help that idea become a reality. The professional training funds we provided this year went to two elementary campuses. It was 145 administrators and faculty who took part in a Kagan Professional Development System. This was just an idea of the kind of feedback that they got from the teachers who participated. The results that we've seen at one of the campuses have increased learning overall by more than 4%. So we're excited, and I'm sure you're seeing that in test results. Technology, which is being, I guess everybody's overwhelmed with new technology ideas. Here you can see some photos of it in action. We have money for robots. Even at the elementary level, though, they have technology, equipment that they can use to help enhance their learning. One special event every year, and we would like to thank all of you who participate, is Tailgate Arlington. Just some photos from last year. Funds we generate there help these grants become a reality. We couldn't make it happen without the employees of the district and the community partners. Here is just an idea of those who are currently with us, and we have had many throughout the years to help us reach that 1100, 1,100,000-plus in grant awards. Some ideas that we're starting for 2013 to help community awareness of the good things going on in the district and with the Education Foundation. It's an opportunity called Lunch and Learn, and it's just going to be an hour where community members can come, meet the foundation, meet people from the district, and just learn about what's happening. It's not a fundraiser. It's just, we want to meet you, and we want you to know the great things that are going on. This summer, we have a Chinese Summer Enrichment Program. These are going to be for elementary students at four different locations. It'll be a three-week-long program. It's an immersion study. No English, they come in the classroom. It's all Chinese Mandarin, so they will learn some speaking and culture at that point. And we hope it gets things excited. We'd like to continue a monthly camp meeting for them once the school year starts. And then, of course, we want you to put in your calendar September 21st, 2013, for our next Tailgate event. I think you will all remember what happened last year.
I've been to many silent auctions. I have never seen the bidding be so competitive over one single item in my entire auction life. It gives me great pleasure. It gives me great pleasure to present to you the item that I'm talking about. So, on behalf of Purdue-Brandon Fielder Collins &amp; Maude and the Education Foundation, thank you all for everything that you do for the district. Thank you all for helping us and supporting us. We couldn't do it without you. So, this is for you.
In case people couldn't tell, it was a caricature, and everybody who's a trustee's picture is on it. It is really a tremendous, and thank you all for being so generous in putting that together. Thank you again for your time, and I appreciate all of the assistance you give us. We love what we do, and it's great to wake up every day knowing somebody's really pulling the train for the kids in our school. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Hibbs?
I actually sit on the board also, and I've got to tell you that this organization is amazing, absolutely amazing. The efforts that you put forward to, they get together for hours on end to strategize. They had a retreat this last weekend. What you add to the classroom, and I was able to help deliver those grants last year, to see the teachers' appreciation, and then to see the kids' excitement because they know what's going to happen, is everything. That's what education's about, and this is where the community, this isn't, these dollars aren't being raised through state funding, they're not coming from federal funding, they're coming out of the community. And Arlington is a great place to be and to live, and you enrich the lives of so many. So for everybody on this front row, for Laura Jones that's not able to be with us here tonight, and the other members of the committee, I can tell you this board appreciates you so much, so much, and thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Implementation Employee and Parent Survey Program. Dr. Cavazos?
Thank you, President Barron. This evening, we'd like to present to the board an overview of our parent and employee survey program. This is a critical part of our strategic plan, obtaining that feedback from our employees about their workplace condition, and then obtaining feedback from parents about their school. And so, at this time, Dr. Carter will present an overview of our parent and employee survey rollout and implementation. Dr. Carter?
Thank you. President Barron, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Cavazos, I'm happy to go over a program that touches on several action plans, actually, and several of the goals of the strategic plan, the implementation of employee and parent survey program. The scheduled timeline that we follow, or followed and will follow, first of all, we had the committee review of survey items that occurred on February 13th. Members included area superintendents, assistant superintendent of administration, principals, teachers, organization representatives, director of accountability and testing, and the superintendent. The surveys were finalized on February 26th, and communication training for the campus principals was held just this past Monday, March 4th, in which we had quite a bit of good input about that. And district-wide communication of the staff went out Wednesday, March 6th. The employee survey will be administered two weeks, March 18th through the 29th. Now, one might wonder, well, the 29th is a holiday. This is online. People can still be at home and doing it online, so it's not something that you have to be in attendance at the campus, or in the department, or any place in the district. So the 29th is included. The parent survey is administered one full month, starting March 18th through April 18th, and we wanted to have it March 18th, starting that because of Public Schools Week. We want to try to involve as many of the parents coming to Public Schools Week to participate in a survey right away, to maximize as many as possible the number of parents participating. The Support Card Survey is May 1st through the 8th, and we'll go into what some of these things are a little later. The rollout training sessions on the employee and the parent survey results will occur May 14th and 15th. And there are actually four groups of training, senior team, two groups of principals, and then department leaders and managers. Each session is going to be approximately one and a half to two hours long. So no, it's not a full day and a half of training for any one group. The rollout of employee and parent survey results will occur right there at the end of May, going into June. The Studer Training on the Support Card Survey Results will be in June. And the action plan development, we feel, is probably going to go from June into July because there's probably be considerable, there'll be so many results to kind of wrap our heads around and then actually translate that into some actions. The employee and parent surveys, first, why are we doing these surveys? The strategic plan vision holds that to be globally acknowledged as a premier school district. That requires a certain standard of excellence, standard of excellence for employees to work, teachers to teach, students to learn, and parents to send their children for a great What other reasons are we doing these surveys? Well, we're going to get some measures, actual measures, metrics that we can look at as evidence for whatever action's going to be taken, and these essential core measures are workforce engagement, parent satisfaction, satisfaction of district services. We need a starting point for growth, and we'll be emphasizing this over and over again. This is not a summative evaluation-type thing of, here are the results, and this is where you are, and why are you there? It is really the starting point to see where we're going to be going, and it's all about growth. What are these surveys measuring? The employee survey is the extent to which employees believe their leaders create a work environment that gives them the opportunity to be most effective. For the parent survey, it's the extent to which parents are satisfied with their child's education. With the Service Support Report Card Survey, it's the extent to which school leaders believe they receive excellent service from district support departments. Notice the term in there, excellent service, not just adequate service. Who will be asked to complete this survey? The employee and parent surveys, the surveys. For the employee survey, every employee except Dr. Cavazos. I have a comment, but I won't say it right now. I've said it in private. Parent survey, every parent who has a child enrolled in a school in the Arlington Independent School District. The Support Service Report Card will be completed by principals and assistant principals. Will surveys be tracked to respondents or to the computer used? Administration of the survey, collection of data, and analysis of data will be conducted by Studer Education. No IP addresses will be tracked. All paper copies of surveys will be entered into the online system by Studer Education staff itself, not by any employee of the district. Is this the only time this survey will be, or these surveys will be administered, the employee and parent surveys? For the employee survey, twice a year after this benchmark administration. The next surveys will be December and March-April as a timeframe. For the parent survey, annually, March-April, after this year's benchmark administration. But then, for us leading departments, three times a year after this year's benchmark administration. How will survey results be shared and used? For the employee survey, Dr. Cavazos will share the district data with the senior leadership team. Then each school principal, department leader, and manager will roll out the district results as well as the results specific to their work location to all staff members. And then each department and school will develop a plan of action based on the results of the survey. For the parent survey, Dr. Cavazos will announce that the results will be shared by school leaders during a specific timeframe, and he will roll out the district data to the senior leadership team. Each school principal will roll out the district results as well as the results specific to their school to faculty and staff. Information about the results and aligned plans of action will be shared with parents through PTA, SBDM committees, newsletters, booster organizations, and other normal means of communication. That is by no means an exhaustive list. How will survey results be shared for the Support Service Report Card Survey? Dr. Cavazos will roll out the district results to the senior leadership team. The senior leadership team will work with department leaders in developing action plans for improvement. The results and action plans for improvement will be shared at a principal's meeting. The bottom line, and we say, like I said, we say this over and over again, the survey program is designed to encourage and support continuous improvement of our learning services to children. to children. Open to questions? Dr. Rice?
Thank you. We are all very excited about these surveys. Can't wait to get our baseline of data to see where we are so we can begin closing the gap that we know exists. We just don't have the data to correlate. Two questions on the district-wide communication... Well, no, that's just staff communication training for campus principals, and then district-wide communication to staff, which occurred yesterday. What about... How are we going about communicating to the parents, to that community? Is there a... One certain way? Is it just getting posted on the website? Or how are we doing that?
I think posting on the school websites, the district website, probably, whatever communication means might be a way to disseminate all the information as possible. There'll be the regular things, like they said with the PTA, with the booster clubs, with the SBDM committees. Whatever route that we can follow, we'll do that. Maybe Leslie would like to answer that a little bit more.
Okay. Thank you.
We're also going to provide the schools with information they can send home, either through their... Some of them do email newsletters, some do print newsletters, so it's going to be going home in several different ways, both in print and electronically.
Okay. Great.
And we'll also have hard copies available at all of the schools and here at the administration building for people who can't do the survey online.
Oh, good. Excellent. And the only other question I had is on the rollout training sessions for the survey results on May 14th and 15th. Are those actual training sessions on what to do on rolling out the results? Or is it a soft debrief of what the results are? Or what is that specifically?
It won't be soft. The...
So it is going to be pretty much a debrief of the results then?
It's going to be a brief on the results. It's going to be much more about the skills of communicating the results and the readiness to do something about it, more than anything else. Let's face it, it's... All of us are being evaluated. And so one of the skill sets is remaining calm. It's how do you convey things in a supportive, encouraging manner without being defensive, you know, at all? Not a trace of defensiveness.
Right.
We'll probably have to have some practice, you know, in those training sessions. But that's what it is. It's key to be sure that, just like that very last slide had indicated, it really is to encourage the growth, the continuous improvement of growth. And that is starting with... Talk about starting right here. That's where it will begin.
Yeah. Excellent. Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I just had one. Will the surveys be bilingual or trilingual?
There'll be surveys available in Spanish and Vietnamese. Yes. Yes.
That's it. Thank you, Dr. Carter.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is appointments. Dr. Cavazos, good news?
Thank you, President Barron. I would like to recommend the individuals discussed in closed session for the assistant principal of Newcomer Center and the assistant principal of Wood Elementary.
Move to approve? Motion by Dr. Rice, second by Mr. Hives to approve the recommendations from the superintendent. All voting in the affirmative. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to introduce the new assistant principal at the Newcomer Center, Kristi Streibas. Kristi? Kristi received her Bachelor of Science from Sewell Ross State University and a Master's of Education from Grand Canyon University of Phoenix. Currently, or most recently, seventh and eighth grade ELA and Inclusion Teacher in Mansfield ISD, previously a K-4th, K through 4th grade special ed teacher. Has taught in Arlington ISD before, as a K-6 special ed teacher at Crouch Elementary, and has taught in Fort Worth ISD. Kristi, congratulations. And is there anything you'd like to say, or anyone you'd like to introduce?
President Barron, Dr. Cavazos, board members, thank you for this opportunity. And I'm really excited about being part of AISD again. And I'd like to introduce my family. They were here to support me, my husband and my daughters. So thank you again. I'm excited, so.
The next person I'd like to introduce is the new assistant principal at Wood Elementary, Ms. Amy Cunningham. Amy received the Bachelor of Science from Texas A&amp;M University College Station, Master of Education from Charlton State University, most recently a reading specialist and dyslexia instruction specialist in Mansfield ISD, has taught 2nd grade in Keller ISD, and a 4th grade teacher and 3rd grade teacher in Fort Worth ISD, and has taught Kinder and 3rd grade in Granbury ISD. Amy, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, or anyone you'd like to introduce?
Board President Barron, Dr. Cavazos, board of trustee members, I would like to thank you and all of the members of Wood Elementary that came out to support me. I would like to also thank some friends that came out to support, as well as my family that is watching over the internet. Thank you for providing that. My husband, Christopher, my daughter Hannah, and my son Mason. Thank you.
Mr. Haug is happy about the eggy business there. If the appointees will follow Ms. Evans out to the foyer, we will have a receiving line. If the audience will please let the board go first, and we will be right back in. We should be back online in about 10 minutes. Thank you. Before we continue with the agenda, I'd like to introduce some special folks out in the Ms. Principal Nix. Good evening. Now, you may have noticed the large cheering section that's out there. Mrs. Pena visited Carter Jr. High this week and invited the Carter Moms to come and visit. So I'd like to introduce Kathy Trevino. Kathy, would you stand up? And can we have the Carter Moms stand up too? We really appreciate the support you give to the school and your kids. Dr. Cavazos, would you help me out there?
Sure.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing on the restructuring plan for Nichols Jr. High. Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, President Barron. Last week, we presented information on Nichols Jr. High and the restructuring plan. And at this time, I'd like Michelle Wilmot-Sanato, our area superintendent, to give us a brief review of our restructuring plan, and then continue with the open forum. Thank you.
Thank you, President Barron, Dr. Cavazos, members of the Board of Trustees. Nichols Jr. High School is in stage four of school improvement for not meeting adequate yearly progress. They've not met AYP in five of the last school years: 2007, 2008, 2009, 2011, and 2012. TEA guidelines, based on the NCLB Public Law 107-110, require the local education agency, which is our school district, to prepare a restructuring plan for a school in stage four. In the event that the school does not meet AYP in the current school year, this plan would be implemented in 2013-14. The administration presented a proposed restructuring plan for Nichols to the board on February 25th, 2013. The plan includes hiring a new principal with input from the campus, conducting a comprehensive needs assessment for the school, gathering input from the community, faculty, and staff, continuation of the corrective action plan with revisions based on the needs assessment, and continuation of school choice and supplemental education services for Nichols students. The approved restructuring plan must be filed with the Texas Education Agency by March 15th, 2013. In accordance with the Texas Education Code and the Texas Administrative Code, we do need to hold a public hearing to address the Nichols restructuring plan.
Are there board members with questions first? In that case, I do have one card. The speaker is Mr. Carlos Badiyo on the Nichols Reconstruction. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How are y'all?
Oh, pretty good.
I appreciate the time to speak with y'all on behalf of the parents at Nichols Jr. High. First of all, we're very confused as to what the situation is that's going on right now with the departure of Ms. Knox, which pretty much everyone loved, and the story, all the rumors that went behind that, were even more confused as to what's going on. I, myself, have two boys that have gone through Nichols. The first one is now in college, and he went through Larson. And then when he got to Nichols, he just flourished, and mostly because of Ms. Lewis and Mrs. Nasworth and a couple of the other teachers at Nichols went. And it just... He just grew. My other one is currently an 8th grader, and same thing. He's just, you know, AB student, involved in just about everything there is to be involved at at Nichols. My big concern is for those parents, which are my friends, that now have kids that are coming through. I don't quite understand what the guidelines were that we did not meet. I understand that some of the students were... That all the students were lumped into one category, which I don't think is fair to Nichols. I think it should have been separated by the kids that do want to learn, the kids that are in ESL program, the kids that are special needs, and then those kids that are in Turning Point most of the time. That is totally unfair, I believe, to the kids that are wanting to be there and want to learn. You know, it's like the old saying, you can't... You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. If some of those kids do not want to be at Nichols, I don't know what the... I don't know what the solution is for that. But there's got to be a different guideline. Otherwise, we're going to be in the same boat next year. And that is for the parents that are coming through and that have younger kids that are friends of mine. So I'd like to get this a better answer, better idea of what's going on with it. And I'd like to not have to wait till the 15th of this month to find out. So if you guys are... If the board can tell me more about what's going on as a concerned parent, I would appreciate it. Okay? Thanks, sir.
Dr. Cavazos? Yes. Michelle, would you meet with the parent afterward during this process so you can explain and answer his questions?
Yes, sir. I will.
Okay. We'll meet with you here momentarily. Absolutely. Thank you, Michelle.
Okay. Trustees, are there any questions? I have no further cards. The public hearing on the restructuring plan for Nichols Jr. High School is now closed. That brings us to the open forum for agenda items, and we have no cards on agenda items. Takes us to the action items, which is consider the restructuring plan for Nichols Jr. High School. Dr. Cavazos?
Thank you, President Barron. And do you have a PowerPoint? We'll go review the restructuring plan briefly here, and perhaps this will answer some of the questions. But we've reviewed this PowerPoint before for the future of Nichols Jr. High. So, Ms. Wilmot, if you would, take us through that. Thank you.
Okay. Adequate yearly progress is a federal standard under No Child Left Behind. It sets performance standards based on the following: reading, math, and attendance. To successfully meet adequate yearly progress, you have to meet federal passing standards, or you have to meet required improvement, which is a 10% increase in each accountability group, and that's called safe harbor. And the standards for passing, the federal standards, increase every year. Nichols did not meet AYP and is in stage four of school improvement. This slide shows the different years and what... Based on what subject area and what student population missed AYP. The most recent failure to make AYP was in 2012, which put Nichols into stage four. The subject areas were both reading and math, and it was in the following accountability groups: all students, African-American students, Hispanic students, economically disadvantaged students, and limited English proficient students. The passing standards, this slide shows how they increase every school year. Last year, it was 83% for math and 87% for reading. This year, in 2013, 92% for math, 93% for reading. In 2014, those standards will raise to 100% for both reading and math. Stage four AYP requirements. The student... The school has to participate in school choice and supplemental education services, continue stage three corrective action with revisions as needed, and prepare a plan and make necessary arrangements to carry out a restructuring option if the school moves into stage five the next year. This is what... This is the corrective action plan that Nichols wrote for stage three, and this slide shows the different initiatives and the length of time that the school has been implementing Here are the restructuring options. The local education agency, which is the school district, must carry out one of the following options: reopen the school as a charter school, replace all or most of the school staff who are relevant to the failure to make AYP, contract for a private management company to operate the public school, turn the operation of the school over to the state educational agency, or any other major restructuring of school governance arrangement that makes fundamental reforms. The option that our district has chosen for Nichols Jr. High School is replace all or most of the school staff who are relevant to the failure to make AYP. The next steps are: the local education agency with input from stakeholders develops a draft plan for restructuring. The draft plan is presented to the school board for review. That was done on February 25th. Plan is presented for a public hearing and school board approval. That is what we hope will be done tonight. Once the plan is approved by the board, it is submitted to TEA, and it has to be submitted by March 15th. This is the draft plan. First of all, the principal... First of all, the principal has been reassigned, and the, and an interim principal has been assigned. The next point in the plan is that a new principal will be selected with input from the campus. The new principal will conduct a comprehensive needs assessment with assistance from the following: the area superintendent, executive director of secondary instruction, personnel department, curriculum and instruction department, the finance department, accountability and testing, the district coordinator of school improvement, and then the external professional service provider, who is contracted and provided to us by the Texas Education Agency. The comprehensive needs assessment will review staffing, services to students, course offerings, scheduling, performance data, and other pertinent information. External and internal scans will be used, as well as research of best practices at high-performing junior high and middle schools. Input will be gathered from community, faculty, and staff. In addition, the corrective action plan will continue with revisions based on the needs assessment, and will continue school choice and supplemental education services. This is, these are important dates that, that we've gone over. And then, next step scenario. Scenario one, Nichols meets AYP. The school remains in stage four AYP school improvement and continues with school choice, SES, and the corrective action plan. The reason that the school will continue in stage four is because you have to meet AYP two years in a row to exit the school improvement cycle. The corrective action plan will be revised to reflect the outcome of the needs assessment conducted by the new principal. Working with district personnel, the principal will implement improvement strategies. The focus will be on creating a new future of consistent, high performance for Nichols Junior High. Scenario two. Nichols Junior High does not meet AYP. The school moves to stage five in AYP school improvement, continues with school choice, supplemental education services, and the corrective action plan. In addition, the restructuring plan will be implemented at this time. The focus will be on creating a new future of consistent high performance for Nichols Junior High. Questions?
Mrs. Hollins.
Thank you. The, to clarify, the recommend, the restructuring options, those are, the only leeway we have are the things that are on that list. We don't create the list, we don't modify the list, but we're, we are presented with a list of options for this stage. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. Those options are presented to us by the Texas Education Agency.
Good. And we wanted to clarify that. And the, beyond March 15, because I know there's a lot of questions in the community and questions amongst the, the faculty and staff and parents, beyond March 15, is there an idea for the timeline, what would happen? Or, or do we have any timeline established for the next steps?
The next steps would be to continue the needs assessment process, gather that information. But the biggest next step is to hire the principal and to appoint the principal, and that should happen in April, early April. And then continue that needs assessment process to determine short-term type of solutions and recommendations for Nichols, but also keep that open needs assessment process so that we can look into the future and deliver the best services for students at, at Nichols, whether that means a different instructional design or, or things like that. And we've had some conversation with the staff and, and about keeping those options open and researching best practices. But the most immediate next step is the appointment of the principal.
Thank you.
Mr. Hibbs.
Dr. Cavassos, I just wanted to make sure that it, the way that it reads, I think there's a lot of uncertainty. A lot of your parents aren't really sure of, you know, what's this mean for my children? What's this mean for the instruction that we have in there? Would, you touched on a key point, and I think we can never stress that enough and make it clear enough that, well, that the administration is going to do a comprehensive needs assessment on the campus. Because if you read that, you, it, some people automatically assume we're going to take all the teachers that's in the school right now, take them to another place, and bring in all brand-new teachers. That's not necessarily the case. What we're talking about is, is making sure that we, in the areas that we're falling behind, that we're doing the right things, and it may be with curriculum. It may be with additional instruction. It may be additional training. There's a lot of different factors that goes into it. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to shut the school down, start all over again. We're just, what we're going to do is focus in on the areas where we are lacking with the AYP standards, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Hibbs. And another way of looking at that, that, that we've talked about is starting with the needs of the students, and then working from, from that point forward in terms of, these are the needs of the students. These are, and, and we can, you know, categorize those in many different ways. But if they have needs related to instructional design, or scheduling, or interventions and things like that, what are those specific needs? And then work your way to then the staffing that's appropriate for that, the schedule that's appropriate for that, the course offerings that are appropriate for that, and, and that progression in a short-term progression, and then longer term. Because part of the, the aim here is to make sure we have sustained improvement, but also sustained performance. So that requires not just short-term solutions, but long-term looks. But always starting with that student need in mind. And that's true for a lot of our schools. That's, that's where our schools, that we start with the student need first, and then work our way to what are those improvements, specific improvement efforts.
Thank you. Dr. Reich.
Thank you, President Barron. To revisit the, the timeline question, just to get a little bit more clarity, these, whatever action we take, it's next school year to demonstrate the progress and the difference in order to get this school off of this negative list, correct? And we have one year to make this turn, or is this a multi-year process?
If you would go back to that scenario slide. The, the first indicator of this is whether Nichols meets AYP or not this summer, based on this year's performance. So that's the first big indicator of our progression. So you see in that scenario, if they meet AYP, then those are the things that they must continue to do, which is basically implement the plan that they've already had.
Okay.
Right? If they don't meet AYP, then it's the implementation of this plan that we're talking about. In both scenarios, what we've shared with staff and looked at with, with curriculum staff and others is that we want to continue that process of needs assessment and restructuring, whether they meet or don't meet AYP, because we feel that there are some important components of that. Most important is how do we provide the instructional design for students to be successful? The maximum success, and then sustain that. So, couple of, you know, timeline issues or, or points. One is appointment of the principal. Two is continuing and, and starting that needs assessment with the principal. But then in the summer, understanding and knowing if we meet AYP or not at Nichols. If we meet AYP, then the process that they've had so far in terms of their plans continues. If they don't meet AYP, then we implement this plan. There's a lot of moving pieces here because of the timing and the structure from the federal government in terms of when we receive our results. You can't really wait till August to begin some of the needs assessment and restructuring, whether you meet or don't meet AYP. That's why the discussion is now.
Right.
Probably the, the other critical point that, that even goes before all that is the approval of the plan by the board, and then the subsequent approval from TEA of the plan. That's still the next step. They have to approve the plan. The plan that you're approving or will be considering tonight is to submit to TEA for their approval. But those are the, the kind of the short-term timelines.
Okay.
Long-term is to continue this process and invest in providing the best instructional design and delivery for students. And, and that's through a needs assessment process, working with the staff, working with the community, working with the parents to, to design.
So, as we go through this process, then it would be important for the parents to understand that come next school year, they are going to walk into a school that is ready for their children, to be engaged and empowered. And it's, I, I think what, what I'm hearing in the community is the confusion of what's going to happen, you know, the rest of this year into next year. No matter whether it's scenario one, scenario two, we can assure them, we're going to be ready for your kids when they come.
Yes, sir.
And that's the main point to drive.
Yes, sir. And that, that's the point of the slide that, that outlines all of the district resources that will be committed to securing a new future for Nichols Junior High School and to help with the, the principal and, and carrying out the needs assessment and, and preparing for the 13, 14 school year.
Well, thank you for all the work that's gone into it. It is a, an unfortunate situation with the, the disconnect between federal and state. And it, it's, it's a confusing mess. I understand and I feel for the parents and the teachers. For us as trustees, for you as administrators, it's, it's a disconnect. It's confusing. So I, I really appreciate you guys working through this, and we're all going to come out better out of this. Thank you.
Mrs. Hollins.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to reiterate something we talked about in work session, that there are so many excellent things going on at Nichols Junior High. I have seen very high-performing students, apparent engagement that is, is outstanding. Had the pleasure last year of attending the, the Nichols Athletic Banquet. You couldn't get a seat in the auditor, in the cafeteria there. There were so, there were so many people there, outstanding advanced academic programs and outstanding fine arts. Truly, truly outstanding. So these difficult conversations as we enter into stage four and have to prepare for stage five, I want the community to know that we are also aware that there are so many excellent and wonderful things at Nichols Junior High. And to that end, I, earlier this evening, we spoke that there'll be a fact sheet that posted on the internet tonight.
That's correct. Mrs. Hollins.
That will, so that people can go to it and say, what is happening? And that the district is starting to post these fact sheets on many subjects. So you can, so it will help you and give a resource. If you could pass that word, that, that resource is there so that you can get the truth and know what we're working on, and that we're here to support Nichols Junior High and every other school in this district. So, thank you very much for your presentation.
Mrs. Pena.
I just wanted, for a point of clarification for the public, if you could go back to the slide that shows Nichols Junior High School AYP history. Because I think this is what causes great confusion, which is more detailed of what Dr. Reich said. If you look at where the column that says missed, met or missed AYP, it shows the stages and where we're going. But the AYP is a federal-level ranking. But you look to the TEA state, state ranking, and it shows that Nichols was academically acceptable and even was recognized one year and only had one year of academically unacceptable, unacceptable under the state ranking. So the state and the federal rankings don't match. And each one of them has a requirement that we measure different things, and it doesn't matter if it's one student that doesn't meet it. It's, it's considered not successful. And that is the most confusing part, even for us. We talk about this all the time with the state legislators. Why do we have different ranking systems? I've talked about it with a congressman. Why do we do this? Why aren't the measurements the same? It's too confusing for parents to have to sit and understand what we have to do. A lot of what we're doing and the steps we're taking now are not steps we chose, although I think what we're doing is right. It, it's mandated to us that we do this. And the measurement where they put the student population, this is done, this is how they look at it. So we don't have a choice of selectively picking out one group and saying, you, you move to the side, it doesn't affect the rest of the school. It does. That's how it's looked at. So, you know, as a parent myself, that confused me a lot. Why does, why do we have, I don't get it. We're recognized, and yet we got a problem here. So, you know, maybe this will help with the clarification. It's two different ranking systems that are causing this problem.
Mr. President, I have one question. No?
No, sir, you don't. But, but.
She'll help you.
But you can talk, Ms. Sinalia. Okay.
So I just wanted to make sure that, that that was very clear to the public, because it is confusing. It's very confusing. Why do we do this? We don't have a choice.
My turn. On this slide, at the bottom there with Mrs. Pena was just talking about the all and AA and H and ECD. We hear a lot of times principals especially will complain that, you know, we missed it by two kids or three kids or whatever. Can you put a number on how many kids we missed it by last year?
Yes, sir, I can. In reading for 2012, under all students, now, the numbers that I'm giving you are the number of students that needed to pass to make the 10%. Not, not to meet the passing standard, to make the 10% safe harbor.
Right, let's just stick with all students.
Okay. That was 20 students in reading.
Okay. How about math?
61 students.
So we do have an issue in math.
Yes, sir. Again, these are not to make the passing standard. These are to make 10% required improvement.
Right. And that 10% is, not 10% on going from 60% to 70%, it's 10% going from 60% to 66%. It's 10% of last year's number.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, I can give you the total number of students who, who tested and the total number who passed, if that's what you're wanting.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Next slide. If you can go to the next slide. As Mrs. Pena was saying, this thing is totally not feasible. 100% of the kids will pass 100% of the time. Okay? We can't get there. But that's why safe harbor is built into it, so that we can show the 10%. And then that's a reasonable number. We should be able to do it. Okay? When the legislature, you know, when the Congress wrote the law in '08, they figured that by 2013 and '14, there would be a whole new system in place, and they wouldn't have to worry about that 100%. But they are a little sluggish, to say the least. Right? Can we go a couple of slides over? The one that says restructuring planning process? Yeah, that one. I guess this is the one that concerns most people the most, is that replace all or most of the school staff who are relevant to the failure to make AYP. If I'm a Nichols teacher, you know, is my job on the line?
Well, sir, you have, if you're a Nichols teacher, you have a contract with the district. And so if you're deemed relevant to the failure to make AYP, you don't necessarily lose your job, although you may not work at Nichols.
Now, is that this school year, or we're talking next school year?
The 13, 14.
End of 13, 14.
No, the plan will be implemented.
12, 13.
If we, if Nichols doesn't make AYP.
So with this summer, then?
Right.
It's, it's a possibility. And, and that, that again goes back to that needs assessment and understanding the needs and the design and things for the school, and, and then the appropriate staffing for that. So it could be additional staff or a reduction in some cases. But, but that, again, process comes out through outcomes from our needs assessment.
Will we have a feel for that before the teachers leave for the summer? Because I don't want our teachers going home and worrying all summer long.
I think we'll have a good feel before the teachers leave for the summer.
Because I think teachers worry enough. I do. All right. Can we go a couple more now on the one that says a new future for Nichols Junior High? And it's the second one of those. One more. The external, internal scans and research of best practices. Hopefully, whatever we discover there, we will implement across the board, not just at Nichols, but in all of our schools.
Good question.
Financially, within reason?
Within reason. And financially, I think that this would be an opportunity to look at those and determine whether they're viable for Nichols and, and starting the discussion at Nichols Junior High. And then, obviously, if that's something that is best practice and, and high performance at one middle school or junior high, then, then can that be replicated? A lot of this has to deal also with uniqueness of the school and the needs of the school. So it's not something that can, because it's working at Nichols, should be working everywhere else in, in the district. However, as we research and implement best practices, if that's applicable to other junior highs, then that's something we'll look at. Really want to focus on Nichols as, as their outcomes.
President Barron, at the same time, we're going to be having a comprehensive need assessment that we're doing with our curriculum right now that should be coming back. That's going to also.
going to also talk about those best practices across the district. We just don't want conflicting conflicts. Thank you.
Okay.
By the way, that was an action item.
Move to approve?
Second. Motion by Mrs. Pena, second by Mr. Hibbs to approve the restructuring plan for Nichols Junior High. Further discussion? Please vote. All voting in the affirmative, the plan as proposed passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to the staffing ratios for the 2013-14 budget. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Barron. Last board meeting in our work session, we had a presentation about staffing ratios and this is time for staffing and where we stand in terms of our ratios. And tonight, we have a recommendation of those ratios and Ms. Evans will present a review of our presentation and also the recommendation. Ms. Evans?
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Good evening, President Barron, members of the board. As Dr. Cavassos stated last work session, we brought you a very detailed report about our staffing process and the staffing ratios that we are recommending. This evening, we're bringing that recommendation back for your review. As you're well aware, the payroll is 89 percent of our budget and so staffing process is something that we take very seriously and we understand that is a big part of our, part of efficiency for our district. Last board meeting and our presentation, there was some concern or some question about kindergarten teaching assistance. As you will recall, in spring of 2011 with the RIF, we had a reduction of teaching assistance at the kindergarten level. We are currently staffed at one kindergarten teaching assistant for four, up to four sections. There was some concern about can we reduce that to one, to two TAs for one to three sections? So, I want to bring you back some data on that recommendation. Currently, we have 16 elementary schools that are with only one teaching assistant. So, that would impact if we went to two teaching assistants for one to three sections, that would impact 16 campuses. If the ratio were changed, those 16 campuses would have an estimated base salary, had an estimated base salary of $14,796 per teaching assistant. That budget impact would be $236,736. So, that would be the, for your clarification, Mr. Hibbs, the information that you asked us to bring back to you. So, the key points that we want to leave you with that we brought last work session, that elementary is driven by state compliance ratios, 22 to one in that K4 compliance area and also is being driven by district initiatives such as teaming and also departmentalization in the fifth and sixth grade. Secondary principals have a discretion in terms of their subject area and they utilize their FTEs to stay within our staffing calculator. We're currently using the MoCasi staffing calculator model and that is designed around the master schedule of six out of eight periods. And courses are, we also brought to you at that time, an establishment of a staffing protocol for new course offerings. So, we bring back to you the recommendation of pre-kindergarten of 22 to one, kindergarten through fourth grade of 22 to one and fifth grade, a target of 26 to one, sixth grade at a target of 30 to one and junior high staffing calculator for an average class of 23 and high school at an average class of 27. And at this time, I'm here as well as Ms. Clark, Rhonda Clark, our Director of Secondary Personnel, to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Hibbs?
Ms. Evans, thank you. Thank you for always being able to be prepared with your presentations and give them in such a manner. Let me ask you, and Dr. Cavassos, anybody from any of our elementary schools, we have the 16 campuses that are affected where you only have the one TA to up to four sections. I know that initially, when we reduced the number of TAs, there was great concern. Back in the fall, as we started the new year, there was another concern that was raised to me from a number of principals and kindergarten teachers alike. Have we been able to get a barometer from these schools? Are they still saying that they're in much need? Because I'm understanding when they're doing, you know, a kindergarten teacher is doing certain assessments on the kids, then the TA is then left possibly to be in the classroom or they're having to combine classrooms to do assessments. And if that TA is all of a sudden overtaken with the job of overseeing a classroom, maybe in a project where a teacher's doing an assessment, then you don't have that TA if there's another issue. Where are we at? What are we, what are you hearing from the elementary schools? Because if this isn't an issue, then I'll walk away from it. But if it's still an issue, I think that we need to address it.
I think you'll get a mixed response from our principals. Many of them have been able to manage that by pulling TAs from other areas. Some have concerns about the testing concern about the one-to-one instruction, also when they have small group instruction. But I think for the most part, many of them have been able to manage within the staffing ratios that they've been given.
Okay, so you're not hearing any call at this point?
I'm not getting them in person.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Thank you.
I need a motion.
Move to approve?
Second?
Motion by Mrs. Pena, second by Ms. Sullins to approve the staffing ratios for 2013-2014. Any further discussion? Please vote. All voting in the affirmative, we have staffing ratios for next year. Thank you. I'm going to move the discussion action items around just a bit. We have a guest with us tonight, Mr. Bill Coppola from, President of Tarrant County College Southeast is with us. He's a great partner with the AISD. Just wanted to see the AISD board in action, sir, is that it? Okay, well, they're at their finest tonight. It just doesn't get any better than this. Our next item is the Notice of Intent to Pursue Designation for an Early College High School. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Barron. This evening, we'd like to discuss with the board and for your consideration, our submission of a notice to intent to pursue designation for an early college high school with Tarrant County College Southeast. We've had a committee that's been working diligently with Southeast campus and the president there in exploring the possibility of an early college high school for AISD at TCC Southeast. So, this evening, we'd like to share with you some information, make a presentation and then recommend that we submit our intent to pursue the designation. This time, Evan Smith, our Executive Director for Secondary Instruction, will give us an overview of an early college high school and the possibilities in AISD. Ms. Smith?
Good afternoon, Dr. Everybody, excuse me, Peter, President Barron, members of the board and Dr. Cavassos. Early college high school, because I'm really excited about this. This is a great opportunity that we have to visit with you about this evening. To kind of give you an overview about early college high school, it's an innovative high school that's located on or near a college campus. It's an opportunity for a high school student to earn a high school diploma as well as obtaining their associate's degree, many times graduating the week before or two with their associate degree before they get their high school diploma. Currently, Texas has 65 early college high schools and when you think about the scope of Texas and the number of high schools and the number of districts that we have in the state, that's not a great amount. TEA developed a designation process according with Texas Education Code and Texas Administrative Code. Students that are likely to be served by early college high school are students that are less likely to attend college, including those who might be at risk of dropping out of school and first-generation college-going students, English-language learners and economically disadvantaged students. Students who have potential for college acquisition yet have little support to access or to enroll and complete college credits during the high school time. Students who may need more academic support in order to be successful in high school and in college. It's a PK through 16 collaboration and with us tonight is Dr. Bill Coppola, who's President of Texas, of Claring, I'm going to go home, Tarrant County Community College, along with many of our committee members, and I just want to recognize them for just a minute. So, if you would stand if you've served on this committee, please. This is a great opportunity to provide, to partner with Tarrant County College. And this committee has worked hard and looked and we've researched for quite a bit of the year this year to learn about the possibilities of establishing an early college high school. The team has conducted site visits, have been to many meetings with others around us, as well as traveling to El Paso where we saw two sites there as well. Discussions have included facilities, curriculum, costs, personnel and program implementation. The design is that it's a full-day program. The enrollment is limited to 400. So, you start with a freshman class of 100, the next year adding another 100, so you have a sophomore class and so on until you get a full high school of 400 students. The students would have access to the college facilities, resources and services, including libraries, arts, labs, cultural activities and extracurricular activities as appropriate. Typical staffing patterns is, it is its own high school. So, you would have a building principal, a counselor, as well as other support staff. The early college high school classes are taught by highly qualified public school teachers and the college classes are taught by college or university faculty. Benefits is that it builds a program of study strategies and activities to create a college-going culture. It enables students to build skills and knowledge for college readiness, including academic behaviors. It provides academic, social and emotional support services to ensure that students are successful. It also provides parental and community outreach to build a widespread understanding of a college culture, access and supports that will be available to students. Now, what we are doing is looking at the Notice of Intent to Pursue Designation and this is due by April 1st, 9th or before. The TEA will provide technical assistance for us and the designation process will take place in fall of 2013. So, what are our next steps? To get the recommendation tonight, we hope for approval for submitting a notice of intent to pursue the designation, to continue and deepen our collaboration efforts with Tarrant County Community College and to extend strategic planning and utilize technical assistance provided by TEA. We are working on a MOU, a memorandum of understanding, and then we are also looking at the projection of budget implications for 2013-2014. Questions?
Mrs. Pena?
Okay, I'm just going to ask you a question, it could be, you know, what if? What if we have 400 and, well, let's go to the freshman class first. You have 101 students that apply. One doesn't make the cut because you can only take 100, right? So, that student, the following year applies again, but has to apply as a freshman, right?
They need to apply as freshmen.
Okay, but let's say they don't get in as a freshman, but the following year and they're in high school and they're a sophomore, they want to apply again. They go into the first, the second group of students. So, they may not get the full 60 credits, but they still get some credits. Are we going to allow for something like that?
Actually, these are designed to come in as freshmen. And then, option that we would have to look at is, the goal is to graduate 100 at that senior-level course. And so, we might begin that freshman level with 120, let's say, because there will be some that move. So, we will take that into, possibly take that into account as we're building that freshman class. It is very difficult to come in. There's a culture from the beginning of the college-going nature here with specific training that comes through as a freshman level. So, it's very difficult to come in after that freshman-level class.
But if you have the, those 120 that go through, because you don't know if they'll make it to the senior level. I'm just trying to figure out how, what the variables are involved in that, because 400 is such a small amount for this size school district.
It is, and that is the limit that's put on the early college high schools by TEA.
Okay, but we're still going to keep our college campuses, I mean, our high school college campuses?
Dual credit? Oh, absolutely.
So, there's still other opportunities?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, we're, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Reich?
I'll come back to it.
I think my train is on the same track there. So, we have IB, AP, dual credit, avid, and this strikes me as being super avid, okay? I mean, that, when you were speaking of what was going to take place and the kids that we highlighted to go to this program, I was thinking avid students all the way. What's it going to cost us? Money?
Many ways? I don't have that spreadsheet with me, but you are looking at a, first of all, it would depend on how we partner in the MOU that we have with the college. The, you would have the staff for the campus, which would be at a minimum, your principal, your counselor, office staff, plus you would have high school courses going on from the freshman level to the senior level. So, you would have that cost there. You'd have some facility cost, possibly. And so, we could bring, we could run some numbers certainly for you on that.
I think part of the structure there is it depends on the arrangement and the partnership with TCC Southeast. Right now, it's preliminary in terms of our arrangement, in terms of facilities and shared-use facilities, actual transportation costs and things like that, staffing. That's all part of the application process and the technical support that we'd receive once we submit the notice to intent for the designation. There's different designs and different models as to shared services and different arrangements. There's some memorandums of understanding where the community college pays for the tuition and the books, because that's also an expense, where we share staff at certain levels. So, again, those are the details that we would be bringing back to the board as we move forward with the application process.
Do we see this program or early college high school as taking away from any of the others that I spoke of, IB, AP, dual credit?
I think it enhances that. I think it's, the design of this is for the traditional first-generation college-going student, which we certainly want to be in IB and AP and those other things. One of the things that you need to think about when we think about an early college high school and the students that would become part of this is they are giving up a high school experience as well in some ways, because it is a separate college, I mean, excuse me, a separate high school on a college, on or close to a college campus. So, you would not have access to all of those extracurricular activities, the sports and those types of things that everybody else has. So, I think it enhances it and it's a different, it's a different type of environment that they would be going. But we certainly want our IB to stay strong, our AP to stay strong and get stronger, as well as our dual credit.
Mrs. Sullins?
Thank you. As we're talking about this this evening, I first want to acknowledge the importance of our strategic partnership with Tarrant County Community College through dual credit, through career tech offerings and now looking at early college high school. What a great arrangement and how thankful we are to be in Arlington, Texas with these resources, working together. resources, working together, and working together in such tremendous partnership. That being said, I'm a, I had an opportunity to visit the Tarrant County Early College High School on another campus and spent some time with that last year. And the more I look and you look at our needs assessments of our 65,000 different students, we have a lot of different students with tremendously different need, and this opens pathways to higher education that it may not otherwise get. And I think it is a, and I've said this before, and I've shared it with Dr. Cavazos, and I know that you would all agree, that poverty is a wretched and cruel situation, and education is the answer. And for students to have the ability to go through our schools, graduate also with a degree, we are building a stronger community. And so I, I'm a huge fan of early college high school. That being said, there's a lot of details to work out. You know, guys are bringing up a lot of good questions about what exactly will it look like? How, what is the impact? What's the cost? What's the footprint? Where will it be? Who will go and where's the equity in the application process? And as my understanding is, in this process is that we're just at the intent to apply, and all of those details, we're going to have a lot of opportunity to work that out. Is that right?
That's correct. Ms. Hollins said that this is the first step to that, and then the details of application and eligibility and recruitment and things like that. I will say that another way of looking at this is the ways that we can maximize the use of our resources. So while there is a cost, and there will be a cost, staffing, et cetera, how can we use our shared resources, our partnerships, to maximize the resources to offer students these opportunities? And I agree with you, we have a variety of needs in our students, and many, many students, we're a very big district. And so when we talk about 10 new career certification programs, or an early college high school, or IB, or AP, et cetera, avid, it's meeting the needs of students, and that's our first and foremost priority, is meeting the needs of as many students as possible through our shared partnerships that we have established, the very strong partnerships, so that we can both benefit from that. And TCC certainly benefits from well-prepared students, college-ready students on their campus, performing at high levels. So if you envision a freshman student coming in for the first time to a high school, or a freshman experience already taking college courses at TCC Southeast, it's a tremendous opportunity. And again, these programs are not for all students. That's the, that's the whole point, is providing opportunities to meet the unique needs of students.
Dr. Cavazos, a follow-up question. Some, in recent weeks, we've talked about performance rubrics for new programs, and that how we would evaluate adding new programs, and how we'd evaluate, and how we do continual evaluation to show how they are working with our district and how that, so this would be a new program that would go through that same performance review, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's fantastic. Thank you.
Dr. Raish.
Thank you, President Barron. Both you and Ms. Hollins covered pretty much everything that I did have. I'm all in favor of this. I think it's a great opportunity. It's a great example of yet further collaboration. Dr. Coppola, thank you so much for being a team player in all this. We have initiated discussions on this through our strategic planning process, that hey, what if? And here we are, about to, I would think, pull the trigger on making it a reality. There is an awful lot to figure out, to work out, but the, one of the great things about our district is all of the things that we have to offer, and this is absolutely something that I think we're going to have a lot of interest in. And with that, I have just one question, which you may not know yet. Regarding the application process, I foresee we're going to get a lot more than 100, a whole lot more than 100. And I would assume that you've gone through and researched best practices, what other places go through around the region, around the nation. Can you give us a little bit of insight on what that selection process and calling-out process is like?
We've gone to several different systems, and they all use a different system. But what we have learned, though, is it's building that rubric. It's building the rubric that meets the needs of our students here. And what we would do is we would build that collaboratively together with teams, being fully informed. And of course, that first year, you don't know what you get. But it's always, it's building a rubric, it's bringing students and parents in for interviews, because this is a different type of environment than we've had before, because you are giving up that traditional high school, which is very exciting for a lot of students, but it's also very different, because it's going to be very, very rigorous. If you've, if you've visited one, then you know that. There's a lot of technical support from Educate Texas, for example, where the teachers are trained. There's some bridging activities for students in the summer. It's, it's a different environment. So we want to make sure that the students are as committed as the parents, and the parents are as committed as the students, and that it's a partnership there at home as well. So you're building a rubric for our students here that we feel is best and the best application. Now what we would hope is that we start that first year, and we get more than we need, and the next year, my prediction would be it would explode. And then that would become a good problem for us to be looking at, because what we want to do is serve our kids in the very best way that we can, and we want to pick the kids that are going to be successful in this program and meet their needs.
So with that said, is 400 the absolute cap that we'd be able to do?
400 is...
Or would we be able to expand this and double it in 10 years or something?
Per campus, I believe, at the moment, right now. Well...
Too overzealous, I understand.
I was going to ask, Bill, would you come up and certainly make some comments, Bill? I mean, we're talking about you, you know?
And are they aware of, Bill has opened two of these campuses, so he has experience in them.
President Barron, Dr. Cavazos, members of the board, thank you for giving me this opportunity to address you. Our chancellor Hadley in TCC is very much in support of our early college high school concepts. I, like I said, this has been the third one that I have been involved in, in starting from scratch. I worked in one ISD where there were five students in dual-credit, and we graduated, and we finished up after two years with 256. And it's like this, early college high school, you can't think of it as your traditional programs you have. It's, I have seen it transform not just individuals, but families. And when these students become role models, especially with, for their siblings, because they're not just a first-generation college student, they're, this is a student that has the capabilities to excel, and we're giving them the tools to do it. The most important part about this partnership, and I just said, I'm celebrating my 14th month here, so it's been a long year and a half here, but the exciting thing about this partnership is the relationship with Arlington ISD, but also the relationship with UT Arlington. This fits into Governor Perry's $10,000 degree. These, all these students will get a baccalaureate degree. I can tell you that right now. I have seen, not only, like I said, not only have I seen students, I've seen families and communities transform. As Ms. Sullivan, Sullivan said, the best way to change poverty within, is through education. And this is changing a cycle of poverty, the students here. So we're very supportive of it. I think the best thing you have going here is Dr. Cavazos' vision and passion, and the passion and vision of his staff. They're just jumping on board, and my staff is just enjoying so much working with them. So we're really looking forward to the partnership, and I hope you approve the letter of intent so we can move forward with the next stage. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Do you have any questions for me, by the way? If I, I'll just divert them to Evan, if I can, okay? Thanks.
Mr. Papa is next, so let's see.
Thank you for this presentation. I think this is pretty much a no-brainer. I know there's a lot of details to go over, and you'll bring us those back. And of course, just like my colleagues here, I have a lot of questions about the, how the program's going to be structured. So let me just ask you, tell us a little bit about, more about the timeline and what types of information will be, you'll be bringing back to us so that we can make decisions on, and if you have an idea of how that structure is set up.
Well, I think that we would continue our evaluating ourselves of other programs so that we can design ours as the way that we want it to be here. And I think there's a myriad of ways that we can look at that. We will be working very closely with Tarrant County in that design. I think that we would, we would hopefully put a principle in place into the year, not too far into the year next year, because that's going to be a key player in how this all comes together. And we've set, we are in the process of setting a vision and a mission for this, so that we, we're aligning it completely to the strategic plan, and that we're using that as the basis of what we're trying to do here. We would hope to have, and these are guestimates here, but we could certainly have ongoing progress reports. We would hope to have our rubric completely finished, for sure, by this time, close to this time next year, have that rubric in place, so that we can have good communication out to all of our eighth-grade students, and that we have lots of information going out to parents and community as to what we're doing and the timeline they are involved in that, and that we're selecting students probably in the end of April, May timeline, so that we're ready to go in the summer of 2014.
So since this is just a letter of intent?
Mm-hmm.
Do we then have to follow with submitting an actual application?
Yes.
Will this board then vote on that application, whether it's submitted or not, and what it looks like?
Yes, I would.
Yes, Mr. Pomp, and the, kind of the tangible next step, along with everything that Ms. Smith mentioned, is to place these items in our budget. So we've got a lot of work to do before June 30th, so that the staffing in particular is in our budget for the board to consider approving, in planning and preparation for next year's application and the designation next year. So for example, Evan mentioned the hiring of a principal and some teachers, et cetera. Well, that would be in our budget by June 30th, so that you can consider that, putting it in the budget as a planning tool. So that, those are the real tangible next steps. So we'd have some estimates for funding and things like that, working with TCC Southeast about facilities and shared use and tuition and things like that. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done in preparation for the budget. So that's a real next step.
When is that application submitted to TEA, and when do we get the approval for the application?
The application is in the fall, and approval is in the fall.
Okay, so they turn it around relatively quickly?
Yes. To give you a little history with that, they've changed the application process. It has been in the spring until this year, and now they are moving it into the fall, which gives more planning time for districts to get things in place versus approving, applying now, approving now, and trying to get ready in the fall.
But in the fall, then, by the time we submit that application, we would have pretty much all these questions that we're asking about the details of what it's going to look like and how it's going to function, how it's going to be structured. We would have all those details ironed out.
Absolutely.
And the board would have approved all that.
And we've been working very closely with Kyle Shep, which is from Educate Texas, who is with TEA, and all of the work that we've done so far, so that we're trying to align ourselves very closely to the expectations that TEA has.
Now, just since, one of the things is, are we thinking of co-locating this with another campus, or does it have to be a standalone, standalone campus?
At this point, our consideration, and it's early in the process, is to locate it at TCC Southeast.
Okay.
And have a facility there. See if I can see Bill.
Do you want me to get between you two?
Is Dr. Coppola aware of that?
Make sure he's still in the building. We plan to locate it, that's initial planning, locate it at TCC Southeast. And again, those are the details that need to be worked out in terms of cost and things like that, but it'll be part of this budget process so that the board can consider that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Again, this is, to me, a no-brainer. We have to do this. Thank you.
It's very exciting.
Mr. Hug.
Thank you, President Barron. And Mr. Pomp, I agree. This is a no-brainer. This is one of those programs we need to be implementing for those students. And Ms. Pena, I love the way you're thinking of, how do we get more in there, and when those ones will apply, and I fully understand that. I guess I'd ask the question, and I know this is kind of a preemptive to a preemptive strike and approach, to y'all's preemptive work that you've already been doing on this. So there's a lot that's going on, but I feel like we've been talking about it behind the scenes in some personal meetings with Dr. Cavazos, myself, you know, hey, let's do this. We think it's a great program. Has, and I guess this question would be for Bill. Bill, has TCC, and I didn't hear this earlier, if I missed, I'm sorry, has TCC implemented this at any other, with any other district?
Oh, yes. Northwest Campus has Marine Creek Academy, which is another college high school.
And that's partnered with who?
That's partnered with...
Is it Birdville?
It's three different, two of these.
Northwest, oh, that'd be...
Yeah, that's up there. I'm not going to...
Okay.
Yeah, it's up there. And we're also looking at others with other...
And are they about that same size?
They have to be. I mean, the success of the students is to work as a cohort.
Right.
This is cohort planning, which we know works at the college level. Students that go through a cohort have a better success chance, a better chance of succeeding. So that's why they start with the 100. And that's the size that TEA basically put on us for this.
Okay, perfect. And then, Dr. Cavazos, are we, to roll this out to students, you know, it's always the, you know, so is it going to be a combination of Bill and your staff that interviews and decides to...
There's more than me, okay?
Well, yeah, I'd say that. I know you're not specifically choosing, but a combination of TCC and your staff that will be going through this interview process, choose the students that are...
Sure, sure. And it'll be with input from TCC staff in terms of our rubric, and that's the real development piece about how we select the students. I think an important thing to consider when we talk about timeline is, while it seems like there's a long time between the fact, when it actually opens, it really is short, because...
Right.
This time next year, we would have selected kids or have applications in place...
We have a lot of work to do.
And designed it, and facilities and things like that. By this time next year, really moving on that. So yes, we work in close partnership in selecting the students, and visiting with the parents and the families about the opportunity.
And would this be eventually, as we have put in our strategic plan, rolling out an eighth-grade awareness program?
Absolutely.
To all students, where they have to choose a career, technical, or higher-education track? This would be a part of that?
That's right.
Plan where they'd be aware of that?
That's right.
So all students in eighth grade would be notified of this and then the application?
Absolutely. And this will be part of one of those options that they'll be well-informed about, and that's the thinking behind that eighth-grade course, is to make sure they know all their options in high school, and the type of credit and plan for career in college, so...
I think it's a great program, and I think with Ms. Jenkins from the Star Telegram in the background writing a story about this, which I know she is, you're going to get so much interest already on the preemptive, preemptive, preemptive approach to this. But it's good to start talking about it now and have this awareness. So I thank you all for all the hard work.
Mrs. Pena.
I jumped on the TEA website to see what it showed about the program, and it also shows that there's sources of funding that you can apply for to help with that, so that's a big plus. We apply for that. I don't know what the long-term application process for it is, and we may not get it immediately, but it's good to know that there's other sources of funding to help us with this initiative. Having said that, and also considering this a no-brainer, are we ready yet to make a motion? No?
Still have questions?
Okay.
I do.
As I said, I'm a big fan of avid, and I just see this as super avid, and it's wonderful. I have a friend who's a new teacher, and this is her first year of teaching, and she's a fabulous teacher, and she's getting married. And she's getting married in next year, a whole year from now. I said, why are you taking that long? She says, well, we're trying to pay down our student loans. I said, oh, how much are they? Okay? Her student loan's over $100,000. And what we're doing with this program is we're going to have kids, without paying a dime, have 60 college credits. Can't beat it. Okay. Now I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation for the early college high school application, or letter of intent.
I'll second. Motion by Mr. Pomp, a second by Mr. Hibbs, to approve the district's recommendation. Thank you. Please vote. All voting in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Okay, we're back on track on the agenda now. The next item is BYO, Consider BYO Technology Rollout Plan and the Impact on the 1213 Student Code of Conduct. Now, we do have some guests in the audience who are just dying to answer questions about this. I didn't know who to introduce first, so we'll just wait and see what happens. Who's doing the presentation? Oh, you may not have to say anything at all back there, my learned guests, because we told Mr. Hill he was going to stand there for at least an hour. Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, President Barron. At this time, we'd like to present the BYOT Bring Your Own Technology Rollout Plan, but also some adjustments to our code of conduct that are now in alignment with the BYOT policy. So Mr. Hill, our Assistant Superintendent for Administration, will present BYOT information, and he has some resources that he wants to talk about. So, Mr. Hill.
There's already a question. Let's hope not. Whoa.
Whoa.
First presentation, Mr. Hill, not going real well right now already.
Phone's going off over there.
It's the very first one, you have two different screens. That's interesting.
I've never seen that before. Congratulations. I truly know. I have no idea how that's putting up there. Huh? Yeah.
Mr. Murray, we don't allow hazing in the AIS, just so you know.
Maybe we're not ready for bringing our own technology.
President Barron, members of the board, Dr. Kavasos, if you would look to your left, our right, and we will go with that projector. As a part of the strategic plan, BYOT is in line with the strategic plan as we move forward in the district. And we brought it to you just as a timeline. It was introduced to the board on October 18th, and we talked about some specifics and the rules and things of that nature. On November 4th, 1st, the board approved the guidelines for BYOT. On February 14th, we had training for the principals on the guidelines that were approved by the board trustees. February 27th and 28th, the assistant principals were trained on those same guidelines in an assistant principals meeting. By March 4th, and some campuses are still in the process of training the staff members on the guidelines that were approved by the board of trustees. On March 18th, there will be a letter and the guidelines that were approved that will go home, and the guidelines will be posted online. March 19th through the 29th, students will begin to bring those signed documents back to school, where the parents have had an opportunity to review those guidelines, and then we'll have those documents at the school with the parent's signatures on them. By March 25th, each campus will have an opportunity to have trained their students on the guidelines for BYOT, and March 29th, we plan to roll out the plan district-wide. When we have, when we approved the BYOT policy, there was a, basically a conflict with the BYOT and the telecommunications devices, because we have the telecommunications devices, which says that the phones and all technology must be off and out of sight from the time students enter the campus until the end of the school day. Well, we came back with a policy that says, okay, now you can use it. And so, what we're going to do now is take a look at, the next several slides are cut and paste from the student code of conduct with one addition, and that's the addition in there to kind of approve the BYOT inside of the telecommunications policy as it is written in the student code of conduct. And so, the next slide will outline basically what we're asking for tonight. The black part, it says that students may possess such devices, however, these devices shall be not visible and must remain off during the school day. Here's the addition to the student code of conduct. The only exception for the telecommunications device to be on and visible will be if the student has been granted permission by the applicable teacher to use their personally-owned technology slash device for educational purposes. In the guidelines, it talks about each campus having individual discretion as to determine the student's personal use on their campus. And so, that would be the only change or addition to the student code of conduct as it is printed. The other slides here just talk about the defining the timelines for which the policy can be used, talks about making campus calls, and students needing permission to maybe use office phones or class phones. Again, these next couple of slides are just the border, the board policy on telecommunications as it is, as it is already stated. First offense for violation of the policy, second offense all the way through, the fourth and the fifth offense. Then, it talks about the depending upon the severity and the frequency of the violation, then the students may subject to, may be subject to full range of disciplinary consequences as set forth in the code of conduct. And then, the last couple, again, we're still discussing those guidelines that have already been printed. And at this time, I'll entertain any questions. They match? Wow. Finally. Thank you. Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Murray?
Yes.
Dr. Raish.
Thank you, President Barron. Well, you kind of went through that pretty fast. That was great. That was great. Thank you very much.
All right, I'll have a seat now.
Gave you good grades. I want to clarify a couple of things with regards to the code of conduct, that one change, which is great, that there's not a big mess in policy and things that we have to fix and tweak. It's just, I am grateful that you got it narrowed down to just that additional paragraph. One of the things that we discussed in the work session and repeatedly over time was to have each campus submit to you, to administration, what their individual campus take is, what their policy is, or procedure, I guess, if you will. Is that worked into this timeline as well, so that we're aware of it, that obviously every campus potentially could be different from one another?
That is correct. With the exception of the elementaries, I do have on record, I don't have it here with me, but I do have a record what all of these high schools and the junior highs, how they will implement the policy on their specific campus. I can and I will get that information from the elementary campuses as well.
Okay, okay. And to clarify also, I'm trying to remember from our previous discussions long ago about this, with regards, say, at junior high or high school level, if they choose, they have the option to choose to have, let those students use them during passing periods as well?
That's correct.
Okay, so, but it is up to each campus's discretion?
That is correct.
Okay. Well, we're looking very forward, and I know our students are looking very forward to being able to do this, and I know our teachers are as well. It's about darn time that we're doing this. So, thank you very much. I really appreciate everything that you've gone through. As far as the communication of it, the one thing that I would recommend, I know there's a letter that'll be sent home, anything that we can do to put that extra communication out there, because I'm sure we're going to get a lot of questions and a lot of misinformation as far as from the community coming back to us, maybe some confusion. And so, with that said, if any information that we can have to disseminate out there would be wonderful. And I guess the only other thing is, with implementing a brand-new thing like this, are we going to have any difference in how much we stick to the code of conduct at first? Is there going to be a grace period for the kids and the teachers to understand this new process per campus, or how's that been defined?
I think you said it. Anytime we're rolling out anything new, there is that transition period, and we've had conversations with the principals about, you know, it's new understanding that it takes some time to get adjusting to. And that's why we're spending time training the teachers, we're spending time training the students, and we're going to do this, I think it's during the open house, Texas Public Schools Week, we're going to spend a lot of time talking with the parents about this new initiative at that time.
Excellent. All right. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Hill.
All right. Ms. Penney.
I was startled to hear what you just said, Dr. Raish, about, and your response to it. If I understood what the conversation was, was that every campus can, or some campuses are now allowing students to use their technology between classes? Is that what you asked?
If, if the campus desires to do so, then it's their call.
Well, then, my understanding of the policy that we implement is not good, because my understanding was, once we implement a policy, they may not dilute it, they can only strengthen it. And if they are allowing that, it dilutes the policy.
I'd look at the specifics. I think our policy and the guidelines that we approved are, everything that we've discussed is in line.
Educational purposes. Educational purposes. What are the kids going to be doing, walking between the classes, texting? How is that educational? I mean, that, this, and all I can see is that causing problems, because why should one school be allowed to do it and not another? Why don't we just put that in our policy so that it's across the board? This confuses me. Why do we even bother to put this in here if it's not going to be adhered to? I don't think this campuses should be able to dilute. It's kind of like a federal law. When the federal government makes a law, the state can strengthen it, but they cannot dilute it. What is the point of us making this policy if it's allowed to be diluted? That's my question. I mean, board, I mean, I need to know what the answer is there, because I can't even support this then, if we can't, if we're not implementing it, I can't support it. It has to be across the board and fair to everybody. My other, my other statement is, this covers the Bring Your Own Technology, and the students that don't have technology, we're going to provide it to them, correct?
Again, this will be to enhance the instruction that's in the classroom. Teachers and administrators basically have been asked that if we're going to require the use of technology and the students have their own, they can use it. If it's required and the students don't have it, then we will be providing that at the campus level.
Okay. And are we going to allow them at some point to take it home if necessary? And if so, I mean, I see a whole set of different rules for those we would provide the instrument to, because they will have it displayed when they're not permitted to. I mean, it's not theirs, and they, you know, we have to have some accountability to know that it's still around, that it's still available. It may be laying on their desk when nobody else has it. So, you know, I don't want to make a rule that can be bent and so that it's different for different students, and teachers have to make an interpretation of a policy that we make. And so, then, if it's at the discretion of the teacher, but it's really not what the intent of it was, that's where I have a problem here.
The Bring Your Own Technology policy starts, at least the way it was adopted earlier, starts with the classroom teacher having the determining factor whether the students can use it or not. So, it's at the classroom-level control of the teacher. If they want to use the technology that day, then, or that period, then the teacher would give permission. If the teacher has not given permission to use your own technology, then you're not to use your own technology, and the consequences then of the student code of conduct, et cetera, come into play. For clarification, the issue about campus discretion was for personal use of your technology is the discretion of the campus. So, for example, if they're allowed to use their personal technology for, during lunchtime, and that was a discussion that the board had, that wanted to give the campuses those, that discretion for personal use outside of the classroom. The classroom is still at the, at the control level of the teacher. The teacher makes that decision, and every teacher makes a decision on their own. But the part about having discretion at the school is on using it outside of the classroom. And the board discussion at the time was, you wanted to give the campuses that discretion to allow students based on different standards in terms of, you know, if it's a reward-type system and things like that, that the campuses should have that discretion to allow students to use it during lunch and/or not use it during lunch.
Well, during lunch, I can understand. Before and after school, I can understand, but it says specifically here, the way this is written, it says, "Students may possess such devices, however, these devices shall not be visible and must remain off during the school day." So, but we're saying, oh, except if this principal says it's okay to text between classes, but this one says it's not. That's still, that's not what this says. So, that's, again, why are we even doing a policy if we're not going to make it adhered to? Yeah, but we said before, during lunch, not between classes. Yeah, well, then we need to change the policy.
Let me call a few other board members and see if we get to the clarity on that. Mr. Pomp.
Ms. Penney, I read this a little bit differently and read it more in line the way Dr. Kavasos was describing it. There are two sentences here in the exception. There's the exception to be visible if the student has been granted permission by the teacher for educational purposes. And then, a separate sentence that says, "Each individual campus administrator has discretion to determine students' personal usage of BYOT for their campus environment." So, I see those as two separate sentences, and those are two separate sentences and two separate parts of the policy, and I think that's what Dr. Kavasos was referring to. The educational purpose is during the classroom, and then, the campus principal, and really that was, I think, the spirit of the discussion as we left it, that there were some, some of us that were more liberal in terms of allowing them to use the technology, and some of us a little bit more conservative in terms of only use it for certain purposes. And as I recall, the decision then was made to allow the principals to make that decision, so that, again, part of the MPE direction that we want to head in is giving more autonomy to the principals, and so that they can make determinations that make sense for their campus. And so, I think the policy's fine as I read it, and maybe we can get some legal advice, but as I read it, I think it's fine for both of those. I don't think it'll be diluting the purpose of this, of this, of this, this policy or the idea that we had, at least in, as we finished the conversation at that time. My question was going to be, are there any, you don't have to tell me which ones, but are there some campuses that are saying, "We will not allow this whatsoever"?
There are some.
So, if they're in junior high and they're not allowed to, then they go to high school, and they don't know that the rule has changed. They'll get in trouble in high school because they were allowed to in junior high, but now the high school says no, or vice versa.
And that's one of the things that we've had conversations with our principals, with as high mobility rate that we have at some of our campuses, initiating those students and making them and their parents aware of what that campus's desires are with regard to the personal use of BYOT.
I guess what I'm saying is, why don't we just say they can do it instead of not? I mean, if you all, I don't have a problem with use of technology. I have a problem with it being, because the calls I get is, why does that campus get to do this and ours doesn't? And I can't explain it. Well, because the principal didn't want you to. Well, but aren't you the board? Can't you make it so that we can use it too? So, what do we do? We could make a call and say, "How come they don't have it?" You know, I guess what I'm saying is, we can eliminate the problem by not doing that, and either just doing it or not doing it.
I'm in favor of having all the campuses do it. You know, and I would hope that eventually all the campuses would be open to allowing the technology we brought in. It's time for us to be, to start being afraid of that technology that the kids, that the students so readily use, and most of them can use it to enhance their learning. They already do it. We heard, we heard from the, from the students when we had our strategic plan focus group come to us, telling us all the different ways that they're using technology and how they're leveraging technology to assist them to, in their, in their learning. So, at the same time, I do want to respect the principals and the knowledge that they have with their campuses. So, I'm really okay. I would hope that the administration is encouraging the principals to open up their campuses and allow that technology to come in, because I think it's going to be better for everyone. However, for now, because, you know, some of us are early adopters of technology and some of us are not, and so, you know, maybe some of those principals will take a little bit longer to get there, but hopefully then they all do.
And just to clarify and make sure we're all on the same page, it's the personal use of the technology that has a lot of the discretion. The fact that they'll have a BYOT policy is what the board has adopted or will adopt. So, it's the discretion of the use, personal use of the technology, lunch and after school, before school. But every campus will have BYOT.
Will it be used where half the students can do it and the other half can't? I mean, if they're, we're giving that kind of discretion, okay, only seniors can. Well, how can you tell the difference when they're in the hall? You know, and this group of people can use it, but this group can't. I don't want it to get there, and that's what I'm afraid of, what will happen if we give that much. We've seen it happen over and over again. So, that's my problem. We just say, "Do it."
And I think that's what, I think somebody brought up earlier, which is that Mr. Hill will monitor and request, you know, when is it allowed, or are they going to allow it for personal use, and things like that, so that we can report some data back in terms of the usage. Also...
You know, and, and this group of people can use it, but this group can't. I, I don't want it to get there. And that's what I'm afraid of, what, what will happen if we give that much. We've seen it happen over and over again. So that's my problem. We just say, "Do it."
And I think that's what, I think somebody brought up earlier, which is that Mr. Hill will monitor and, and request, you know, when is it allowed or are they going to allow it for personal use and things like that so that we can report some data back in terms of the usage. Also, as, as, you know, it's this time of school year that we're implementing the, the actual BYOT, we're going to learn some things, uh, in April and May. And that's a good time in terms of implementing it so we don't start trying to learn in the fall. And so if adjustments need to be made, then Mr. Hill will come back and, and visit with us about adjustments regarding the policy and, and what has worked and what hasn't worked.
Mr. Hibs?
Ms. Pampa, or Ms. Pons, I'm sorry. I've got everybody confused right now. Ms. Penya, um, uh, to, so I can, so I can address this. It's interesting because, um, this discussion we had last November and there was two dissenting votes on this motion. It was only President Barron and myself. Because we went into this in great detail because, uh, the idea of autonomy, I'm all for the idea of autonomy, uh, on, you know, for the campuses. And as a board, we do have a oversight responsibility to make sure that the policy goes out and is consistent. President Barron, I lost his battle in that respect. And a couple of comments I would like to make on the conversation as it's been. It does clearly say that the principal's going to have the opportunity to have the discretion on what type of personal use is going to be used, uh, you know, outside, whether it'll be during the passing periods or at lunchtime. For the comment that Mr. Pampa made, you know, to your surprise, that there, some campuses are saying, "We're not embracing the idea of bringing your own technology to school." We probably need to figure out if that, I have a suspicion that that's not really at the high school level, is it? That's generally at the, the elementary level?
Yes.
Okay. And what happens there is that we can't lose sight that our kids have technology at school already. Our kids are, have the laptops, they've got webbooks, and they also have iPads. So we don't want to lose the idea that there isn't, uh, uh, technology that's already in the classrooms, okay? So I know your concern was the concern that I kept on raising because I wanted to have the surety, or assurance that every child that was in a classroom would be provided some type of technology if, um, the teacher was allowing it, okay? So we're not, we shouldn't, um, focus in, uh, is this elementary principal not allowing a second grader to bring their eye touch or their, their, their mom's cellphone? The discretion, I, I like the wording on this, um, change in the, uh, student code of conduct. And I know that, uh, Mr. Pampa said maybe we needed attorney's opinion on this. Our attorney actually wrote this. So, um, we've got our attorney opinion on it. The question is that, do we accept how it's worded or do, uh, do we ask to go back? I think that, uh, if we, if the board's intent is to say that we're going to offer each school autonomy to allow the principal or the, the administrative and teaching staff to bring, uh, bring forward this policy, um, that's what we're going to have to respect. That's what we voted on last November. So at this point, I believe the only thing we're looking at is, is this sufficient? Because I don't think that we're all saying that we want to go back and have that same debate over that we had last November.
One of my concerns is, is that if we say at their discretion, will this be used as a disciplinary action to remove their, their ability to do it? How, you know, and the first time I hear that, um, that one person didn't get what another person, I'm going to really be upset. If I get a call saying, "Well, they got mad at my kid, so they told him he couldn't use his technology."
But if they're using the technology outside of what the given campus, um...
No, that's not what I mean. I mean, let's say a campus says they can use their personal devices between changing classes, before, after, and at lunch, and then they say, "Well, except for this student. We're not allowing him." It's kind of like putting you in timeout.
I would be hard-fetched to see that happening.
Well, me too. That's what I'm saying. If it happens, I would be very upset.
Singing out one student, but I, I do believe that in this case, the intent of, and you've got to remember, I'm, I'm debating something that I wasn't necessarily for. So what I, what I'm saying here is that the intent of this is that it's going to be granted, the student's going to be granted the permit, uh, permission within the classroom. So what we're, we're assuring there is that the, uh, that the students aren't going in and texting, going on Facebook, going on, and doing these other things that are outside of what the teacher is asking, uh, or allowing them to do with their, their technology. Test time, I can, I, I see that the teachers are going to say, "Put those devices up unless they're using, uh, an open book or open phone test," okay? So there, those are going to be the times that have to be administered. Now, it, uh, the exceptions that's, uh, that it's talking about, the campus discretion, discretion of the administration is saying, "Okay, you know what? Our camp, our campus and our students seem to be responsible enough that we're going to allow them to use these, uh, devices before, after, and at lunch." I don't think that you're going to find every campus saying that we're going to allow them to be able to use them, uh, in passing periods. I think that, uh, once this policy goes into place, you'll see a lot of principals making some tweaks on it. You know, as Mr. Barron said, uh, right before the, the vote happened back in November, he says, "You know, I don't want a bunch, be running into a bunch of kids in crowded hallways looking at their phones." So I think that we're, if we're saying that we're going to give those principals this autonomy, uh, this is the first step in, in implementing that for them.
Thank you, President Barron, and I'll be quick. Ms. Penya, I, I didn't read it the same way as, or it is Mr. Pampa. I didn't see it as diluting. I see it as giving, um, our principals the autonomy to do this. And I, for one, think we're up here picking apart something when I have a lot of faith in our principals to make their decision for their campus. Ms. Penya, I disagree. It doesn't need to be across the whole district. Every school is not the same. Every school is going to have a different fit for this. Could principals use it as, "Hey, if the rule's not abused, we're going to allow this"? Yeah, by all means. It's a pretty good process and people use it a lot to implement that. I have a lot of faith, Mr. Hill, I don't like here in some schools aren't going to be implementing it. And, but luckily I have a lot of faith in our superintendent and senior staff as that'll be part of an evaluation of how these campuses are using technology. So I have a feeling those are going to be implementing technology much quicker than they expected, but that's our superintendent's job to be handling that. I, I have a lot of faith also in our principals to know how to use this, how to utilize it, how to make it work for their campus and their population of the students that are working. Each campus has a completely different culture than the other campus. We are too large of a district to sit here and say, "Every single campus is exactly the same." It's not the case, and I don't think we have to treat it the same. No one said exactly that, but you did say you want autonomy across the entire district. And so I, I would disagree with that because in this world of school choice, and as we saw parents camping out for schools, each school is not the same, and I do think we need to allow our principals to run their schools.
Mr. Pampa?
Um, I, I'm sure that they're getting a lot of technical assistance, the principals, in terms of how to develop the policy that they're going to implement and how to design it and, and all that. That would be the only request, I guess, or I'm sure you guys are already on that. But I just think that, you know, with given the, get the, it's one of the first things we're doing, you know, giving that autonomy to the, to the principals. This is one of the first policies that I see that we're, we're actually doing it in policy. And so it, it comes with some responsibilities, some risks, all that, and, you know, just, I would recommend that the administration, uh, give them a lot of support so that they're successful in, in implementing what they want, want to implement in their campuses.
If I could make one point of clarification, Mr. Hogg. It's, uh, we don't have campuses that are saying that they're not implementing the academic part of it. We've got campuses that are saying that, "Hey, we may not allow the personal use."
Perfect. And that, that's a much better thing to hear, and thank you for that clarification. Because I think, because I think we all had a little confusion on that, on when you said that. Because at first I thought it was like you were saying. Then as the conversation continued, I said, "Okay, obviously I didn't hear it correctly." So thank you for that clarification.
The personal use, yes.
That's a good clarification.
Yeah.
Mrs. Penya, I think that your hypothetical student would be told he couldn't use his phone because his phone will be safely locked up in the principal's office because he did something wrong. Yeah. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge our two talking expert, talking head experts in the back, Ms. Gabby Crum and Jim Holland. They're here to lend support to Mr. Hill, and he didn't need any support tonight. There they are.
Thank you.
Gabby and Jim, thank you very much. Okay, I need a motion on the agenda item.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pampa, second by Mrs. Sullins to approve the agenda item as posted. Please vote. All voting in the affirmative, the item passes. Thank you. And I will get back on track now, and this is item A, consider approval of the Lone Star Energy retrofit loan. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Barron. This time we'd like to discuss an opportunity for a, an energy retrofit loan, and Ms. Powell will take us through a presentation regarding this matter. Ms. Powell?
President Barron, board members, Dr. Cavassos, um, we do have an opportunity to obtain some funding to allow, that will allow us to do some energy retrofits to improve our energy efficiency and save some money on our utility bills. The program is through the State Energy Conservation Office, and it's known as the Lone Star Program. This is a program that uses some money from the petroleum violation escrow fund to provide loans to public entities to help with, uh, energy efficiency projects. This particular program has been in effect since 1988, and they have awarded 215 loans over the years totaling $257 million. These loans carry a 2% interest rate, so it's a very, very favorable rate. And they go through an application process twice a year for entities to obtain funding. We have participated in two of the Lone Star pro, or two Lone Star programs in the past dating back to 2006. And the first one totaled $1.9 million and provided, um, uh, mechanical lighting and controls for Bowie and Lamar High Schools. And then the other one was about a $4.9 million project in 2008 that, um, replaced lighting in a number of our campuses and provided power factor correction, uh, at five high schools and mechanical piping conversions at eight schools and chillers even at two schools. We have identified an opportunity to, uh, do some additional work through some, a preliminary energy assessment. This particular opportunity has identified that, uh, we could do projects at 81 different district sites, and those projects would generate a total, uh, annual estimated savings of anywhere between $550,000 and $650,000 a year. And the projects would include interior lighting improvements, complete the T-12 to T-8 conversions that we started with some of the first, uh, one of the first loans. That would be at 54 sites, installing exterior LED lighting at 19 sites and power factor correction for 50 sites. Also, building commissioning and control optimization at 11 sites. So the projects that we've identified are estimated to cost $4.8 million and have an average payback of $7.2 million. As I said just a minute ago, the, um, the loan, uh, program offers a 2% interest rate, and the repayment period for your loan is re, is structured over the life of the, the payback period. So essentially, it's, it doesn't cost you anything. You're repaying your loan out of the savings that you generate with these projects. And so you repay the money over, uh, the estimated payback period. So in summary, uh, this is an opportunity for us to gain some energy efficiencies that will generate, uh, electricity savings to us, uh, down the road once that loan is paid off. And then, um, also improve the comfort and learning environment for our schools and extend the life of our equipment. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Ms. Powell, could you go back two slides?
So that $550,000 to $650,000, is that straight energy savings?
Yes, electricity, yes.
At current costs?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that is consumption.
Mrs. Penya?
How does this go along with the facilities assessment?
These are, these particular projects are, are considered very basic, uh, energy retrofit projects. The facility assessment does not provide an, an energy audit component, and so there's nothing that would come out of the facility assessment for this kind of a retrofit. And so these are, again, very, very basic. We've done some of them before. They will help us, uh, it, reduce our energy consumption. Probably one thing I should mention is before you can even get the loan, uh, an engineering firm has to confirm the savings, uh, in your consumption, uh, estimates, uh, for the particular projects that you're going to undertake. And then CECO reviews those estimates and those certifications from the engineering firm, and they have to confirm it as well before they'll approve the loan application.
Mrs. Sullins?
Thank you. Ms. Powell, what is a T-12 to T-8 conversion on the interior lighting?
That has to do with the lighting, the bulbs themselves and the ballast, and I think, uh, I'll ask Mr. Carlisle to...
Thank you.
Further define that. That's as far as I can go.
Me, me too. Oh, you went further than me there.
And I might not be able to take it much further.
I'm confident that you will.
T-12, uh, lighting is the old regular fluorescent lighting, the big tube lighting, and a lot of those, uh, had, uh, the, the typical ballast. And T-8 is a, a more efficient, smaller lamp, and it'll have an electronic ballast in it.
Occasionally I have, um, parents, um, talking about concerns about some light bulbs that have mercury in them, some of those new light bulbs with the spinning taps, uh, are these mercury gas bulb?
No, they're not. And that's some of the difference in, in the ballast are safer and the, I'm not sure how the lighting is. I know all of the T-12s are mercury-based lighting in.
Well, yeah, very good. I was, because I'm, I'm all about saving money, but, um, safety comes first, so making sure. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Rice?
Thank you, President Barron. On the engineering firm analysis of this, is that part of this project cost or is that a separate cost or is that free?
That will be part of the project cost.
So that's part of the 4.8?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, the, uh, the lighting that you have defined on there, on the exterior lighting, is that just, uh, pole-mounted and exterior? Does that include any of our athletic facilities?
I don't believe it's any of the athletic facilities.
Okay. Okay, that's all I need is... Okay, thanks.
Mr. Pampa?
Thank you, President Barron. Does the total project cost include the cost of the interest?
Yes.
The 2%?
You're, well, no, you're, you're repaying that interest out of your savings. So, um, yes, I, I think the answer to your question is yes. They have factored that into the 4.8 million dollars.
And I agree that 2% is a very favorable rate. However, this is money that we could, I mean, ideally, or, uh, that we could pull out of our fund and pay it and not spend 2% interest.
You could, uh, and then you have, have committed that, uh, that portion of your fund balance. And again, the repayment period is structured to match the savings you're, you're generating on the projects. So you're really not incurring any additional cost to pay it back. You're paying it back out of savings, and then once the loan is repaid, then the savings are yours.
However, if we paid cash for it, we would save the 2%?
You, yes, you, well, you would say that, but, and you have spent your fund balance now.
Which would be repaid back, I guess, in 7.2 years, we'd have that back in there and might...
Yes, right.
And save the 2% that is costing us.
Yes.
Um, I don't know, what, what is this 2% on four and a half million dollars over two, over seven years?
Uh, I'd have to work that out. Just to put it though in perspective, the bond sale that we just did, uh, rates were at an all-time low, we heard when Mr. Wilfer came. an all-time low, we heard when Mr. Wilfer came and made that presentation in February, and the rate that we got on those bonds were 2.6%, and so this is even less than that.
I would like to see the number, what that 2% is over that 7.2 years, so that we can see it in actual dollars, what this taking a loan is costing us.
And we can get that to you. In terms of timeline and bringing this back, I think if we have to wait and bring this item back in April, that's going to create a problem in terms of getting the design work done within the timeframe that the program demands.
Well, I mean, I'll open it up to our, to our, to our board, and maybe Mr. Drolinger can run the numbers here on the spreadsheet. I see him, I see smoke coming out of it, so he must be running them. But, yeah, I mean, we have an extremely healthy balance, fund balance. We have an excess of what we've committed to keeping, and if this is a project that maybe is necessary now, and we can see that we're going to get some savings right off the bat. I don't think we're earning 2% on that money that we have in the, in those funds.
No, we're not.
So, even with accounting for the, any earnings that we may get, I think that may be a, still a better investment than, than a 2% cost. So, anyway, that's my comment on that.
Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, President Barron. Mr. Papa, what I love you're talking about is no matter what, you realize we need to do this. I love that. I think, I think we all agree, we know we need to do this, we need to track this, and the savings we have can be used to fund more programs, more projects in our schools to change the lighting. Because, Ms. Powell, when you estimate the savings on, the only question I have was, the annual savings estimate, is that also including the staff time that it takes Mr. Carlisle's staff to change out lights as they burn more frequently?
No.
Or, or the, you know, ancillary cost of what it costs us for safety around our school when those outside lights are burned out, because they have to be replaced more than the newer lighting? So, now we're risking the safety of not only our students, but also the safety of our property and our facilities. And so, I think those costs come in no matter what, and, Ms. Papa, that's an interesting concept of the 2%, and so I think it's interesting to hear that, and I can go either way on it, but no matter what, I think it's a good thing we're doing this and using those savings and the money we save from this, kind of earmark that money to make more changes of the lighting in other schools, and so it extends across the entire district, I think is a good plan for this board.
In that case, the agenda item is to consider approval of the Lone Star Energy retrofit loan. I need a motion on that, because that is the agenda item.
I think we have an answer on the interest, $350,000 over seven years. And again, it's being paid back from the savings we generate from the projects.
Make a motion to accept the administration's recommendation on this project. I'll second it. We have a motion in a second to accept the administration's recommendation for the approval of the Lone Star Energy retrofit loan. Is there further discussion? Dr. Raich.
Thank you, President Barron. In thinking on Mr. Papa's point, if this does not pass, where are we left, seeing this agenda item is specific to this? Do we have to put it on the agenda again as an action item, but just for these improvements and enhancements, then?
It would be a budget amendment to appropriate the funds to do the work out of the fund balance, and then we'd bring, obviously, we'd bring back, either way, you're going to bring back the bids on the work itself.
Can I clarify? I'm not opposing this. I'm okay with, I just wanted us to think about, you know, and I'm sure the administration's already given this thought and have some ideas of why they want to do it on a loan rather than use some of the fund balance, so, I mean, I respect the presentation of the administration. I thought it was a valid point to consider, you know, the $350,000, but then we have that money tied up for, you know, for that period of time. So, I mean, I think there's a balance there, and I'm not, I'm not opposing this. I wanted to have that out in the open, make sure that we are aware that it is costing us, in essence, some money.
So, does that answer your question, Dr. Raich?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Please vote. All voting affirmative, motion passes. Thank you. Brings us to items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? Ms. Powell.
It's my privilege this evening to report that our schools have received donations from the following individuals and organizations. The Arlington High School Band Booster Club, the Arlington High School Baseball Booster Club, the Arlington High School Boys Basketball Booster Club, the Arlington High School Choir Booster Club, Arlington High School Golf Booster Club, Arlington High School Orchestra Booster Club, the Bowie High School Baseball Booster Club, Lamar High School Baseball Booster Club, Lamar High School Cheerleading Booster Club, Lamar High School Choir Booster Club, Martin High School Cheerleading Booster Club, Martin High School Choir Parent Booster Club, Martin High School Football Booster Club, Martin High School Golf Booster Club, Martin High School Sun Dancers Booster Club, the Martin High School Swimming and Diving Booster Club, Sam Houston High School Class of '82, Bowles Junior High School Band Booster Club, the Bowles Junior High School Orchestra Booster Club, Bebensey Elementary School PTA, Corey Elementary PTA, Ditto Elementary PTA, the Arlington Kiwanis Foundation, El Cabacho Mexican Restaurant, Martin Sprocket and Gear, First Rate, Arlington Alliance for Youth, B. Griffin and J. Birchville, Rayleigh Superior Cleaning Services One, LP, Stepping for Success, Safeway, Box Tops for Education, Darren and Terry Moore, Canalis Furniture, Summer Associates, Arlington Scadium, Inc., Consolidated Traffic Controls, Mackey Services, Richter Animal Hospital, RJ Construction. So, the total donations presented for consideration this evening are $158,762, which brings our year-to-date total to $825,770. We also have seven bids on the agenda this evening, and in all cases, the administration is recommending the lowest bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Thank you to our most generous community, and we can tell the economy is improving.
Yes.
Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Raich, second by Mrs. Sullins, to approve the consent. Please vote. All members of the president voting in the affirmative. Mr. Hill's had to step out for a moment. Thank you. All right, we have two discussion items. The first is development of the AISD instructional model. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Barron. This evening, we'd like to present information, just an overview and some information about our instructional model as part of our strategic plan. That's a major component, is the development of that instructional model. So, Renee Pope is going to take us through a presentation on the instructional model. Renee.
To President Barron, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the board. I'm waiting for my presentation to come up. No. I should say, development of the AISD instructional model. We are.
It's Mr. Hill's fault, I think he caused it.
He has the touch. There it is. As a reference, I'd just like to let you know where the instructional model fits within the strategic plan. It falls under the framework of the success, the inspired learners, in its strategy 1.2 under goal one, and they read really, really similar, as goal one is the, the AISD will be a high-performing, technology-rich school district with leading-edge experiences that promote engagement, creativity, critical thinking, and achievement. And then, strategy 1.2, which is where the instructional model is charged, is that we will implement an instructional model that promotes engagement, creativity, critical thinking, and student achievement. The first thing I want to do is kind of like just go over you with you briefly, what is an instructional model? I did a lot of research on, on different instructional models. I've talked to a lot of wonderful people, and then this is kind of a composite. It is a, it's a common framework, and it's a framework that's really broken into three components, and that is the instructional planning, instructional delivery, and assessment. And it will be a common framework that will be shared by all of our educators in this district. It will be organized, the planning and delivery of that model will be organized around the four essential questions, and those questions are at the heart of the professional learning community, and they are, what will students know and be able to do? How will we know they've learned it? How will we know when they haven't? And then, what will we do when they, when they already know it? And in addition to that, our model is going to include a learning environment component, because it's important for us to establish a framework by which all of our learning environments, and those are like classroom, virtual, library space, what is a framework for a learning environment in the Arlington ISD? So, those will be the, within the framework of our model. The purpose of our model is, above all, to create consistency all across our district in how we deliver curriculum. It's important that we identify as a district, what are those effective research-based instructional practices that all of our teachers will make instructional decisions based on? It's important that we define as a district the role assessment plays, because we know that formative assessment is very powerful in enhancing student achievement, and so it's important that our model outline the role the assessment plays, formative and summative. It's also important that we develop a shared vocabulary about teaching and learning across our district, and the model will definitely make that possible. And in addition, when we think about being, we have a lot of diverse learners, they have a lot of diverse needs, when we think about being, really offering differentiated instruction, the model will allow our teachers to design and deliver those lessons based on a common framework and common research-based instructional practices. The characteristics of the model, number one, it's going to be learner-centered. That's, that's essential for, to actually achieve what's been outlined in our strategic plan. It needs to be applicable to all classrooms. That's core classrooms, fine arts, music, KATE, foreign language, all of our classrooms. It has to be just that broad. Now, Robert Marzana wrote a book called The Art and Science of Teaching. In that book, he outlines the fact that the science of teaching is the research-based practices that we all make our decisions from, but the art of the teaching is the creativity. And so, I wanted to make it very clear that this model will absolutely provide the freedom for our teachers to be creative, to meet the needs of their students in their classrooms. We will have a base, which we have identified, saying, these are the best of the best, but they will have always the flexibility and the freedom to choose among those things to do what's best for their students, and that's the art of teaching. And then, of course, this is just language straight from our strategic plan. It's going to promote engagement, creativity, critical thinking, and student achievement. And finally, it's going to maximize student success because it's going to provide a common framework for all educators. And so, if all of our educators are making sound decisions based on research-based practices, that will benefit all of our students across the district. Now, this, I, what I did, this next part, what I've done is, the instructional model has connections all the way through the strategic plan, and I wanted to just give you a snapshot of just how important this endeavor is, is going to be. So, I've kind of outlined in blue, that's the language from the strategic plan that the instructional model is going to impact. So, under our beliefs, number one, the instructional model will provide a common framework to support effective teaching in all AISD classrooms. It will provide teachers with research-based best practices that allow every student to succeed, and it will define the essential opponent, components of an AISD learning environment that will support school environments that impact student achievement. Under our mission, we have the language of relevant, innovative, rigorous learning experiences, and so the research-based practices that we outline in this model will support the creation of relevant, innovative, and rigorous learning experiences in our AISD classrooms. When there isn't the objectives of the strategic plan, the instructional model will increase instructional effectiveness, which will support the objective that 100% of our students will graduate on time and excel at their school or career of choice, and that 100% of our students will reach their full academic potential. And then, finally, in our goal one, which is the strategy, it sits under goal one, the model will absolutely support the developing of leading-edge learning experiences that promote engagement, creativity, critical thinking, and achievement. So, with that in mind, activity number two, under strategy 1.2, is that we were going to research successful instructional model components and create AISD model. So, what I want to share with you now is the research that I have conducted up until this point. This is a list of the school districts that I have talked to across the country. I've had many wonderful conversations with a lot of really awesome people, and they've been very open with me about their models, how they implemented them, who was involved, what went well, what didn't go well, and it's just been a rich and rewarding experience. They were very honored that Arlington Independent School District called them. Some of them only had five schools. They were very honored that we called them and that we were seeking knowledge from them on the process that we were embarking upon. So, it was, it was really wonderful. And so, these are some of the schools that I contacted. San Angelo ISD in San Angelo, Texas, the Salinas Union High School District, they have eight schools. I contacted the Wake County Public School System in North Carolina, and they have 169 schools. Troop County School System in Troop County, Georgia, 21 schools. Millard Public School System in Omaha, Nebraska, 36 schools. The Boise Independent School District in Boise, Idaho, 51 schools. Hillsboro School District in Hillsboro, Oregon, five, and then the Mafacton School District in Eaglesville, Pennsylvania, and they had seven schools. And of those districts that I contacted, these are the instructional models that they use, and this is a list of the models that I have researched up until this point, and they're all very, very powerful. I talked to, my conversation started with Holly Captain, and if you remember, she came and talked to us about the curriculum audit system, and she put me in contact with a lot of really wonderful people. Jan Jacobs was the, was the person from the Curriculum Management System Incorporated that came and did our Level One and our Level Two training in the district, and then she put me in touch with Carolyn Downey, who was one of the originators of the curriculum audit process, and also with Dr. Virginia Boris, who is an awesome researcher at the University of California-Freysno, and she and I have had several conversations in terms of research on instructional models. Roger Anton is a retired superintendent of the Salinas Union High School District, and he and I have talked extensively about how they implemented the model that they use in Salinas. Greg Cameron and Sylvia Pertle are, I guess, representatives from the research labs. One of us is the Southwest Educational Development Lab, and then the McCrell. And then the McCrell, which is the Mid-Continent Research for Education and Learning. And they're in Denver, Colorado. And then Dr. Gavassos came back from his Harvard training with information about the seven Cs for learning conditions. And that was, training was done by the Cambridge Education Group. And that was Rob Ramsdale. And he and I have been in contact about the seven Cs model. So these are some of the findings that have come from the research. All of the models that were on that list, all are broken down in the, the components of an instructional planning, instructional delivery, assessment, and a learning environment. Most of the districts that I contacted, the, these were the individuals that they included in their selection process. There were school administrators, central office, curriculum and instruction staff, teachers from all grade levels, business community, and teacher organization representatives. For most of them, the selection of the model took a full year. And then they talked to me at length about how they implemented their models. And these are just some of the ways that, the most common ways that they implemented. Most of them had at least one day of overview training on the model for all teachers in their school district. Most of them, the, the leadership for implementation on a model on a campus was their campus leaders. And they, they, they actually conducted the training on their campuses. And they were a part of the trainer and trainer team. So when they came to the district, they came with their teachers, and they went back to their campuses and they implemented. Most of the districts implemented their models over a period of several years. And in some cases, when the model had more than one component, the campus, based on their data and their needs, got to choose the part of the model that they were going to start with. And their administrators and their, and their teachers helped make that decision. And some of them implemented elementary at one point in time, middle schools at another point in time, and high schools at another time. So, in terms of the findings, there were three development options. Some of them selected a pre-existing model, like the dimensions of learning. Others created their own model, that was Millard Public Schools. And then the Salinas School District, which used a mastery learning model. And they customized it based on their, their own district initiatives. And Millard Public Schools created their own model, but they revised it according to their district initiatives. So those were the three different development options that I discovered. So, these are my recommendations based on my research. I think our committee in Arlington ISD should be composed of our teachers from every grade level, our administrators, instructional staff, our accountability and testing department, instructional technology, central office, parents, business representatives, community, and teacher organization representative. I recommend that we, we will select a pre-existing because I think it comes with a lot of research behind it. It comes with a lot of evaluation and a lot of success. But I also think that we, we will integrate our own district initiatives, such as the professional learning communities and data-wise. And activity five, under strategy 1.2, is to have 21st century, cross-platform, project-based, peer-focused, learning and virtual learning environments. And I think that will allow us also to integrate into the model that we choose once we get to that point. The committee is going to be very, very involved in figuring out what criteria are we going to use to make us, make the selection? And these are just some of the criteria that we need to consider. Number one, the expectations from the strategic plan. Number two, we, we've had a lot of level one training. We've invested a lot with the curriculum management project. And so we need to make sure that our model meets the standards of the curriculum management improvement model. And that's at the heart of the level one training. We also need to make sure that the models that we consider have very, very strong research-based practices for our instructional planning, instructional delivery, and assessment. And we also need to correlate the findings to the curriculum audit. And this is Keller's data. We also, in our RFQ for our curriculum audit, they also did this same study for us. They went into the classrooms and they just made a tally of what did, what did they observe in terms of teacher activity and student activity? And so this kind of data really will inform an instructional model. Because we want to make sure that our instructional model is, provides strength and, and support for the areas that the audit found that where we need to make some changes. And so in terms of a timeline for developing the model, right now, we're in, in March. And so we've conducted our research, we finalized our committees. And then this month, the last week of the month, we, we will bring the committee together. I think our committee is about 40 people. And that, to work on, like, what is the purpose of that committee? What are the goals of that committee? We need to work on decision-making processes, like consensus building. And then we need to start establishing our common language. And then in April and May, we will start with the introduction and the analysis of instructional models. And we'll do, we'll begin to develop that all-important instructional model criteria. And we will conduct site visits to school districts with instructional models. And then June, we will continue our work on the instructional model evaluation criteria. And I will come back and give you an update on our progress at that point. During the summer, I will finalize the work that the committee did thus far. And once everyone starts back to school again in August, September, the committee will use the findings from the audit to make sure that we can correlate, we, our model, selection criteria targets, those areas that we need to improve upon. Then the committee will select three instructional models. Then I will bring in people to train us on those three models for a full day so they can really get a sense of what it's like. One of the school districts actually had teachers come in that had actually implemented those models and to talk to their teachers. And they, they found that to be a very powerful process. And then, so in the month of August, September, we will have conducted training on one of those models. And we will do the other two in the November, October timeframe. Then we will select our instructional model, October, November. And we'll get feedback from our administrators and our teachers. And we'll integrate our district initiatives, the PLC and the data-wise. And then hopefully, in December, we will be ready for the model to be approved by the Board of Trustees. Now, I am ready to take any questions that you have.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Thank you. Mrs. Pope. I want to commend you this, on this presentation, this, I couldn't be more pleased. When I talk to people in the community about why I'm excited about the future of AISD, this is why. The, the, the comprehensive depth of the work that you have put into this is apparent. And I believe it's going to be fundamental, fundamentally important to achieve the strategic plan and improve educational outcomes for all students. I truly couldn't be more pleased. In the, this information is a, is the outcomes of all this tremendous, bold action of the board and the superintendent and administration. I'm really looking forward to the next steps. I noticed in your material that at least you mentioned one, but also another school, Wake Forest, followed a similar process. They had the exact same kind of curriculum management audit that we had, and then moved into instructional model redesign to improve their district. So that, let my colleagues know that that's exactly the process that we've seen. Is that, were the rest of the districts, had they gone through curriculum management audits as well?
Interestingly enough, most of them, yes, they have.
Good.
And I, and I, in the search process to find them, I Googled and looked for districts that had a strategic plan that called for an instructional model. So, all those districts were aligned in that way. So most of them have had, yes, they have had curriculum audits.
Again, thank you. I would jump up and clap, but I'm just so excited. Appreciate your presentation this evening. And I might, Mr. Hogg.
All right, enough of that. Mr. Popper.
I'm going to disappoint you, Mr. Barron, because I am absolutely giddy about this. I, I almost cannot contain myself. And, and really, you know, I've only served on this board, board a year and a half. And frankly, a year and a half ago, I would have not understood mainly a 10, probably a 10th or maybe 100th of this presentation. But, you know, through our, I remember sitting in, in the, during our strategic planning session in this very subcommittee and trying to wrap my brain around what in the world this was. And we went and brought Dr. Gavassos to explain exactly what this was. And once I began to understand what a foundational piece this has to be for the entire restructuring of our school district and, and moving it from, you know, what it was to really a high-performing school district, everything you have in here is, is really taking that into account. It's, it's taking all our, our vision of what we wanted to accomplish. All the, the wording from the strategic plan, I mean, everything you've done, everything that we expected. The research that you've done is fantastic. I can tell you, I'm extremely impressed with this presentation, with the work that you have done. And I'm sure the staff that has supported you has done. And, and I want to commend you and the, and the administration and Dr. Gavassos for having the, the broad scope in, in addressing this issue and really searching for information from multiple points so that we really do end up with the best instructional model for Arlington ISD. This is one of those things that, you know, most people don't, won't understand. Most people in our community, the parents and everything. But I can tell those parents that this is one of the pieces that is really going to launch this district into a whole new level. Once we get this done, our curriculum audit and implement this, it's, it's a game changer. It really is. So I'm excited, I'm proud of the work that you've done. And I look forward to getting the updates. Thank you very much.
Dr. Reisch.
Thank you, President Barron. I will echo the sentiments of my colleagues. But I have, I have some questions. Imagine that. The, I, I, it's wonderful, I'm so excited about this. The, the one question, we discussed quite a bit, and, and you had mentioned it in activity five, one of our desires to have things cross-curricular. Two, two questions. One, is that activity five under strategy 1.2 in our strategic plan? Okay, okay. Because I wasn't finding it. I, I thought so, I was looking for-
Well, strategy two is the, was the, the research. It's, it's that, it's the last strategy. Then it goes to professional development, it's strategy five.
Oh, okay, okay, good. Thank you. And my related question is, do any of these districts that you've looked at have a cross-curricular component in their instructional model? Because it seems that that is something that, that we heard a lot about. It, it seems a very interesting, engaging, project-based kind of thing to do. But I have no idea how that actually works. And so I was curious if, if any of the districts that we're looking at are doing things like that or not.
No, they didn't have the verbiage of, of doing the car. They, they had the PLC, and then a lot of them have done very technology-rich within their plans, but not the project-based and cross-curricular.
Not the cross-curricular?
We'll be cutting new ground.
Okay. Okay. And so would it be safe to assume then that we probably won't have cross-curricular then? If these are all the ones we're looking at?
You know what, we are going to select, hopefully, a pre-existing one. And we're going to integrate district initiatives. So we would have cross-curricular. But that feels like we have, we're going to have to grow into activity five. You know, because the, the model sits on a lot of foundation. And so you have to build a foundation first so that the model will be successful when you implement it. So if there's several different layers that we'll, we'll go through. But I definitely think at, at some point in time, we will absolutely have project-based and will be cross-curricular and cross-platform. And Dr. Gavassos sent me something that looks like that too. So we will, we will get there, yes. So it will be a part of our model. But maybe not immediately, we'll have to grow into that.
Okay, okay. And I, I would also say that one of the things that has resonated with the community that I've spoken on this specific issue about is that we would be creating a brand-new instructional model. And what I'm hearing is, what you're saying is, we're, we're going to adopt a model, maybe with some tweaks. Is that essentially it? And I say that because I've, I've put it out there quite a bit that, you know, we're, we're, we're so good, we're not only going to look at the best of the best out there and look at their terrific instructional models, we're going to steal elements that we feel fit into our district needs from each of those models and basically create an amalgam of all of those into a brand-new model. So that's probably different, though, than what I'm hearing you say we're actually going to do.
Okay. Once we develop the criteria and we start evaluating models against it, what you said is exactly what's going to happen. Because, and I know that because I've looked at all of them. And I personally like different parts of them. And so, I mean, it, it, it just jumps out at you. But the first thing we have to do is we have to have a very strong criteria by which we evaluate. And I think the committee will, will see the same thing. Because we have some unique things that we need to address in our district. And so in order to address those things, we won't, you can't get something that's prepackaged. So we are going to come out with what you described.
Okay. Well, that's good, because we have very bold goals in that strategic plan. And to become globally lauded as a, a premier district, not just nationally, but globally, is going to take us pushing ourselves to that huge bar. Okay. Let's see. Those, those districts that we're looking at, I, I, I'm so appreciative of, of the research and, and the networking utilizing experts that, that you have, that, that we have hired to do our curriculum audit, et cetera, et cetera. So obviously, those are decent districts to use as, as examples to glean information from and learn from. As far as their actual ratings as a district, I, I know some of them. But are they, for the most part, all considered pretty high-performing? Or are they just not all high-performing? I mean, a mix?
They're, they're a mix. Some of them said to me, Renee, we implemented it very poorly. And let me tell you what you should not do. And that was helpful too.
Good, yeah.
That was helpful too.
Appreciate your candidness.
The Mathacton School District is very, very high-performing school district. And they do dimensions of learning. But it was more of the way they, they did it. They, it's, I've had wonderful conversations with, with everyone. So it, it, they're, they're a mix. Some of them have a lot of, like Boise, Idaho. They have a lot of English-language learners. And, and they're fairly successful with the model that they're using and within their district. So they're, they're, they're arranged.
That's good. Excellent, excellent stuff. I think two, two more things. One, I, I think your timeline is, is great. It doesn't match what is on the, at this point, the, the completion dates on the strategic plan. And I'm not complaining about that, but I'm just making a point that we, there's about just under a million dollars' worth of expenditure that we've already allocated to this budget cycle. That'll essentially be a carryover, I believe, into our next budget cycle. So we'll have a, an extra increase in our fund balance probably this year, carrying forward to next year. And then with that said, the, the adoption will probably take place next December, is I think what you said. Does that mean that the, the model will go live that following calendar year? Will go from approval from December through the end of next year, next school year? So that the following school year is when we actually go live with that new model? Or how, how would that implementation occur?
I would recommend we do that. The, the, the actual planning for implementation is just as challenging as actually the creation of the model. And what they, they told me over and over, that's the most important part, how you roll it out. You know, and then they talked to me about early adopters and the people who resist and, you know, so that the implementation is, is important. So what, what happened is, once it's adopted, then we will reconvene the same committee or, or different parts of that committee. And we'll go forth into planning for implementation. And we will come back with an implementation plan.
Okay. And regarding the committee, I, I think that the, the layout is great. Do you have an idea of how many of each of those? How big is this committee going to be? Because-
It's about 40 people.
Okay, okay.
It's about 40 people, because it's all, it's all the instructional staff. And it's, it's, here, I'll take you back. It's, it's- It's, it's, it's at least forty, there are at least forty people. So we will, we work in, in subgroup, and we have to be highly organized.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, because you're talking three levels of education times, a lot of different subgroups in there to participate. Okay. And then the other question, when we discuss strategic planning, an issue that came up, actually outside of strategic planning, was start times for school. And I was under the impression that as part of our strategic plan, we would assess start times. There's obviously been a lot of focus on high school start times, but I'm thinking all three would have to be adjusted. Is that part of the, the instructional model approach as well, to see when they're doing certain things, if you're looking at start times or not? Or if not, when does that fit in to us dialoguing about that as a board?
Well, I had a conversation with Dr. Cavassos, and it's, it's, it's under the umbrella of the plane, of the model. We're gonna do the model, and then it will be, it will come in as, as a Phase 2.
Okay.
Because we have representation from that group on our committee.
Okay, good.
So it will be, it will be definitely coming, so we'll come back with that as Phase 2.
Excellent. So pleased. This is wonderful. It really is. A lot of hard work's gone into it. Really looking forward to hearing what, what you find out, and this is the easy part, I guess, and probably the fun part, the real work is still to come. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Mr. Hug.
Thank you, President Barron. Ms. Pope, I never thought in my life I'd say I'm actually excited about curriculum.
Because it's exciting.
Well, I, I guess I have to say that tonight, because this is exciting. So you, you've done a great job. One quick question, just for some clarification on this. The schools you researched and the districts you researched, I think it's a good cross-section. Are any of these, like, we're kind of thinking Salinas Union High School, is that a charter school? Do they utilize high-performing charter schools? Are any of them high-performing charters or possibly high-performing private schools?
They're all public, they're all public school districts. In California, they have elementary school districts, and then they have high school district.
High school, second, yeah.
So that, that just, just has middle and high schools.
Did, did we take into account, is there in consideration of researching, possibly additional research of high-performing charters and high-performing private schools? Because we are in a very competitive school environment. It's just one recommendation, I would say, because the charters are bringing in very, some different, very different perspectives. They have, I mean, less rules sometimes for, than what we have to play with, but I think it's a good idea, because I think a mix and bringing in some of those factors are a really good combination for us.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you. So we go into next school year without an instructional model?
Yes.
Oh, we have the current one. I see. Oh, okay. And as the year progresses, we will be evaluating the proposed new model through December when we'll vote on it? Is that the theory for next year?
The board will evaluate it. Say that again.
Yeah, you want to vote on a new model next December.
Right.
Okay, that was the, that was the question.
Yes.
That brings us to the short legislative update. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Barron. Ms. Powell has a brief legislative update.
Why do you keep saying that?
Ms. Powell.
I think I get the hint. All right, we do want to update you on our activities since our last meeting and remind everyone that the district has, or the board has adopted a legislative agenda covering the five areas you see on the screen. Whoops, went the wrong way. Tomorrow is actually the deadline to file bills for this legislative session. And as of March 1st, was the last report that I had received that had a count of bills. And we have, the legislature has filed about half as many bills as they did for the session, the last session. So that's kind of an interesting turn. In terms of some of the, the more significant items that have taken place, on supplemental appropriations, House Bill 10 was approved by two-thirds of both the House and the Senate, and so that will now go to the governor's desk for signature. And in this particular bill, this is where they approved additional funding for Medicaid for the current year, and a little bit of additional money to finish out the foundation school program for this year. Senate Bill 758 is also a supplemental appropriations bill to provide money in the current fiscal year, and this particular bill will appropriate another $1.75 billion to undo the payment delay in August for school districts. And so that's good news. The full Senate has approved that bill, and it's now been referred to the House for consideration. Senate Bill 1 is the appropriations bill filed by the Senate for next, the next biennium's funding, and they are, they've actually talked about adding almost $1.4 billion to the foundation school program beyond what was filed as part of the original appropriations bill. So that's good news for all school districts. We are a very, very long way from an appropriations bill being approved, but should this particular bill be approved as it is filed right now and adjusted by the Senate Finance Committee, the Arlington ISD is estimated to receive an additional $8.9 million in state aid next year, and so that would certainly be welcome. The, the additional money, the way that they're allocating it, would actually increase the basic allotment, and it raises the, what is called the regular program adjustment factor back to one. This is a factor that they put into the funding formulas in the last session to, to help cut our state aid. And so they would take that back to 100% of funding. This particular bill, we think, will be voted out of committee next week. There's, there are several working groups of the Senate Finance Committee that are working on different pieces of the budget, and I think the, the entire thing's gonna come back to the Senate Finance Committee next week, and it's expected to be voted out to the full Senate. In terms of Senate Education Committee, they had a hearing on February 27th where they invited the Florida Governor Jeb Bush to tell, quote-unquote, "the Florida story." He spoke a great deal about vouchers and charters and mandatory online classes and the school rating system they used in Florida. March 5th, there was also a hearing, the Senate Education Committee, they heard a number of bills, eleven bills, and they only voted one of them out. The rest of them have been left pending. And for the, those eleven bills, AISD actually registered a position on four of those bills, and there's a summary here, and I won't go through all of those. But we did submit letters on each one of these and asked that our position on these be registered with that committee hearing. The House Public Education Committee also met on Tuesday, March 5th. They heard eight bills, and again, all eight bills were left pending. We registered a position on three of the bills, and these are the three here. There have been no bills voted out of the House Committee yet this session. Federal sequester, I thought it might be a good time to touch on this. This is actually a, a federal issue, not so much a state issue, but there's been lots of talk about it in the news lately. The federal sequester took effect last Friday, and TEA has not yet received all the information it needs to make very definitive statements to school districts about specific impacts. We have had some conversation with different people, and we understand that the state is supposed to receive its information in the next few days, and then it will take likely three weeks or more for them to work through all the information that they receive from the federal government. And so maybe around April 1st, we'll begin to, to have an idea of what impact this might have on us. It's, it's actually a very complex, complex formula that will be applied to actually determine your, your portion of the sequester. This could affect all of our, all of our federal grants, except for the child nutrition grants, the title grants, and the IDEA grants, and the IDEA or our special ed grants. There will be no impact in the, in the current year, because these grants are actually funded through federal appropriations that came to the Department of Education last year. So that money was already there and available, so nothing will be cut from this year's budget. Next year's grants may be affected by as much as five to eight percent, but again, it's a very complex formula, because there's a hold harmless provision that trumps the sequester in each of these areas, and so it's not just straight across the board, across all entitlements. This also affects some of our bonds. You may remember that we issued some QSCAB bonds out of the 2009 bond authorization, and those come with a federal interest subsidy. And so the, we will see our interest subsidy reduced by 8.7%. And so we will recognize a, a small reduction in this year due to this particular sequester, the impact of the sequester. It should be about $27,000 this year, and about double that next year, and then each of, each of the next five years, that amount is $54,000 less than what, what we're scheduled to receive. So this year, we can absorb that through probably surplus within the debt service fund and possibly, if not, certainly the debt service fund balances is very significant and can absorb that $27,000 reduction. And should the sequester continue, that cut continue into future years, that would simply become a consideration as part of setting our, our debt service tax rate. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Dr. Reisch.
Thank you, President Barron. No questions. Thank you for the update. Just wanted to give the board a little bit more information. Obviously, this is a very fluid process. Senator Paxton from Frisco just introduced what some are calling a voucher bill, the business tax credit for scholarship bill. So it's been talked about, obviously Senator Patrick's been touting it since before the session began. So it's out there. Don't know when that will be heard. I don't think it's on next week's docket, and we'll discuss that as a committee if we have our conference call tomorrow morning. But I, if, if you haven't seen it, the Texas Tribune does a great job of hosting events, and they recently had Senator Patrick from Pub Ed on the Senate side and Chairman Acock on the House side together, talking about their views. And in order for these things to really move, they need the House's support. And he has clearly, clearly stated that anything related to this, he's not gonna let out a committee, essentially. He didn't say that specifically, but he is not, he's not in favor of this whatsoever. So even though this has come from Senator Paxton, and it may get pushed out on, through the committee calendar process and out onto the floor of the Senate, it's most likely not gonna go anywhere, I don't think. But we'll talk with our, our consultants and, and get advice from them. And we are also going to make sure that, or assess what items in, in our legislative agenda have been touched upon in this legislative session. Our goal is to touch on at least a top 10, if not all of them, and we'll, we'll find out very soon the details on that. So we'll just keep you posted, it changes daily. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Now we come to our open forum for non-agenda items. The second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. The derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. I have two cards from the audience. When your name is called, please step to the podium. You'll have five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there is one minute left for you to complete your presentation, and when the red light comes on and the buzzer sounds, please end your presentation. First card tonight is from Reverend Kev P. Tatum Sr. from Fort Worth, representing the Texas SCLC. His subject is inhumane treatment of black students and the impact of institutional racism. Good evening, Reverend Tatum.
Good evening, Mr. Barron, to the board and superintendent. My name is Kev Tatum, and I serve as president of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference here in Texas, and we are a civil rights organization who, sole mission is to eradicate poverty, racism, and violence from within our society. As you're familiar with our founder, Dr. King, who died violently to violence, spent his entire life talking about love of mankind. And as a Baptist minister as well, I'm here because of my love for people and my desire to see every child and every person treated with respect and dignity. I have grave concerns with what appears to be a culture of silence and the attitude of acceptance of inhumane treatment of African-American children and the mental health crisis caused by the hidden support of the practices of institutional racism against people of color. You all have been made aware of our federal complaint we have filed against the district in regards to a teacher who took the liberty to pour pencil shavings into the mouth of a special ed student. While we are greatly concerned about the horrific act, we are just as concerned about the response from the district in handling this particular case. We've had some time to sit back and study this case, and my conversations with senators and others in Austin this past couple of days, and others who I've come in contact with, and no one can recollect an incident as preposterous as a teacher who was certified would think in their minds that it was okay and acceptable to do such an act. In fact, the law says if a person obstructs the airwaves of another person, that is a second-degree felony, which is a state jail felony offense. And yet, when a crime is committed, your policies, your rules, trigger law enforcement to be involved. And everything that we've seen to this point, from the mother and from those involved, give us the clear appearance that not only was the official authorities not called, that there was an attempt to cover it up quietly and allow the teacher to go back to the classroom and before the student, and apologize to the student, as if that was appropriate. I don't know about you, but we don't and we cannot tolerate institutional racism or inhumane treatment of any student. What this teacher has done is caused an incredible amount of mental health problems with the student, with his family, and with those who have been supporting him, because no one can understand why this board has been so silent in denouncing this horrific crime against a student. What we have seen, as we've seen across the state and across the country, is that these systems go out their way to be protective of the staff and leave the students and the parents vulnerable, and in a defense mechanism where they have to defend themselves against a system that does not embrace them or the action that has transpired. As I sum up my comments, I want to say to you that the mother, when she reached out to us, she shared with us a letter that she had written to you all as the district and provided copies to others. When I read the letter for the first time, and after I finished crying, because we're talking about someone's baby, I appreciate you, Mr. Hibbs, for at least sharing the dignity to return my call and respond in a way that's mutually respected. I appreciate you, sir. I'm offended that no one else had the dignity to at least say, Reverend Tatum, we hear your concern, but we need to wait for the process to finish as you did, and that's due diligence. But if you treat me this way- But if you treat me this way, and we have the ability to move forward, I can only imagine how these vulnerable parents feel, who feel that this system does not embrace African-American children.
Thank you, sir.
And if you look at your failure, if you look at your data, and I close, Mr. Barron.
Thank you, sir.
If you look at your data.
Thank you, sir.
If you look at your data.
Thank you, sir.
Eight out of 10 of your African-American boys are ill-prepared for life after high school, and you spend $120,000 per kid.
Your time is up, sir.
And we're asking the board.
Your time is up, sir.
To please denounce.
Your time is up, sir.
The behavior of your staff.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Next card, Mr. Luis Castillo from Arlington, representing Arlington LULAC Council 4353. Subject is a double standard. Good evening, Mr. Castillo.
Good evening, President Barron, the St. Louis Board members, Superintendent Cavazos. My name is Luis Castillo, and I'm still the president of Arlington LULAC Council 4353. I wanted to convey to the board some of the concerns that LULAC also shares, which Reverend Tatum just echoed. And our concern is not just because he's black, it could have been Latino, it could have been white. No kid should be exposed or be subjected to such a behavior, no kid, regardless of color. And I think, I don't know what's more uncomfortable, the action itself or the silence that came along with it. You know, I'm struggling. What was more serious here, the silence of the board or the action itself? And I appreciate Board Member Hibbs for reaching out, for communicating, but he was the only one. And we're concerned that there's a double standard here. When it comes to our students, board policy has zero tolerance in their conduct. We don't have that for staff, for teachers or staff. You know, and I'm thinking, you know, why? Why is that? I mean, adults should be held to a higher standard. We should set the example for our kids. It's not the other way around. We put the burden on the kids when they commit something serious, they get expelled, sent to alternative school, but yet, when a staff member does something like this, you know, or anything similar to that, you know, we don't have a zero tolerance policy. You know, that's how perceptions are developed. And perceptions is that there's a double standard, because there's a pattern of behavior, not only with this board, but years back, a pattern of behavior of things that shouldn't be happening and are happening, and the board kind of sort of stays silent about those issues, like they don't want to hear it, sweep it under the rug. Earlier today, I think, early this evening, Ms. Pena was talking about, we were all having that discussion on the technology of the schools. Ms. Pena's concerned, I think what she said was, you know, how about a district-wide universal application of the policy? I think that's what she was going with. And I think Mr. Bowie pointed out, rightfully so, hey, our schools are different, you know, and I took that to say that he recognizes that a school in West Arlington is not the same as a school in East Arlington. West Arlington is not representative of East Arlington. And what I'm leaning with this is that I think that this school board should take a serious consideration and bring a discussion of single-member districts to this board. We need two courageous board members to bring the issue to the table for a meaningful discussion. I believe the Star Telegram ran a story last month, last week, I'm sorry, saying that it's time to have that discussion. If you look around our community here, we have cities, school districts, there are elected single-member districts, the constable, the county, our state legislators, our U.S. representatives, all of those are single-member districts. Why is this school board hesitant to do that, to do the right thing? The demographics have changed. We need to come to speed. We need to accept the reality of the changing of the demographics. And I think if you take note of the, some of the commentary and analysis that was done after the presidential election, you know, some people are still living in the yesterday years. We're not there anymore. And I think you need to come to terms that the change has come, and we need single-member districts in the school district of Arlington. And the board could very well place the issue in the ballot by your own action, but for right now, I'm asking, well, let's have a meaningful discussion of single-member districts, you know, and let's start easing this perception, which to some of us, it becomes a reality about double standards. If we go hold our kids to the ultimate standard, then we need to hold our adults to a higher standard. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. And those are all the cards for tonight. Superintendent's report. Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, President Barron. I'd like to share some information about our school district and our students and some of our staff that have had exceptional experiences. First, Sylvia Lanis, Food Service Compliance Coordinator, was recently recognized by the Texas Department of Agriculture for the district's 20-year summer feeding program tenure. And you'll see some pictures as we go through these presentations. Arlington High School Jazz Band was recently placed third in 5A Division of UTA Jazz Festival. The judges picked one outstanding brass, woodwind, and rhythm section performer for the entire festival, and the brass award went to John Salasad. Kevin Day also received an Excellent Soloist Award, so congratulations to these Arlington High students. Arlington High Choir Director Dinah Minger has been elected the new vice president and vocal division chair for the Texas Music Educators Association. Arlington will be very well represented by Dinah and the TMEA Executive Board. The Sam Houston High School Texans Drill Team won 12 awards, including first runner-up state champion in the Lone Star Championship Dance Drill Team Competition. Great job to the Texans. Two schools, Carter and Hutchison Junior High, recently revalidated as avid national demonstration schools by the Avid Center for National Demonstration Team. They are among only 124 avid national demonstration schools across the country. Congratulations to Carter and Hutchison Junior High. The Communications Department brought back three bronze, four silver, and five gold star awards from the Texas School Public Relations Association Conference. They also received the Best of Category Award for the AISD-TV News Special Report on STAR Testing and the Crystal Certificate of Merit Award in the School-Community Partnership category for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Sharing the Dream Celebration 2012. Martin High School Video Production Students presented a $15,000 check to MD Anderson Cancer Research recently in honor of Junior Taylor Healan, who is battling cancer. The money was raised by selling pledges for YouTube videos of the 2012 Lip Dub video. The video included every student, teacher, and staff member in school, and was featured on local, national, and international media. The Bolts Junior High School Symphony Orchestra members and members of the Seguin High School Choir and Bowie High School sophomore Delrena Wen performed at the Celebration Rally for Texas Public Schools with several school districts in attendance. The rally was held to promote value and impact of public education in our state, and they did an outstanding job at that performance. Charles Herring from Gunn Junior High won the Area 7 Spelling Bee, and Reed Stradning from Bailey Junior High was the runner-up. In Area 8, Brianna Seid from Ausley Junior High placed first with Brian Wen from Bebensee Elementary as a runner-up. Charles and Brianna will compete at the Regional Spelling Bee held at TCU March 20th, and these students did an outstanding job spelling a good number of words. Last Saturday, 27 4th grade teams, 20, a lot, yeah, 27 4th grade team members and 29 5th grade team members last Saturday from throughout the district competed in the Battle of the Books at the PDC. The competition is sponsored by AISD librarians to promote reading among students. Students compete as teams of four and answer 40 critical thinking questions about eight books that they've read. The teams can win gold, silver, and red ribbon, or honorable mention during the contest. It was well-attended, and the kids had a great time. That concludes my report.
Board members with a report. Ms. Pena.
Okay, I want, first of all, this was a call meeting that I'm going to report on, but I wanted to mention it because all of us were present, and it was on a Sunday afternoon, and that was a curriculum management audit meeting. I just wanted to mention it because, you know, we do give up a lot of our own personal time, and we always feel it's for a good reason, but Sunday meeting is not very normal for us, but it was the only day we could get together. So I just wanted to mention that as a big kudos for the board. The other thing is, I was invited by the principal, Sam Nix, to speak at Carter Junior High. They have a group of individuals who, they don't have a formal PTA there, but they have a group of Carter moms who come daily to support the staff and students there. And as you saw tonight, I invited them to come to the meeting, and the message that I was trying to give to them when I spoke to them was what they can do when they want to implement change, or they don't understand what's happening in their school, what the process is for them to either have a voice or get the message to us, and where each one of our names and addresses and phone numbers were on the website, so if they wanted to reach out to us, they could in that fashion as well. So I was there to share that type of information with them, and they were very happy to hear it, and then very honored, I think, to have called out their names here tonight. I think that now we have some real vested volunteers, and this is along with our strategic plan of reaching out to the community. Also went to Atherton Elementary for the Read Across America, and I attended Reading Rocks at Crouch Elementary. And that's it for me for this report.
Mr. Hibbs.
Our board is extremely busy, and everybody on this board does so much, and these guys are my heroes, all seven of these guys. I get to take a free ride sometimes, and I appreciate them because they do so much for the district and their training and everything else. I was able to do some things this last week, and it was a lot of fun. Was able to be part of the Texas Rally for Schools with many of my compadres. I was able to go to the Black History Month Program at Martin High School, the Seguin Black History Month program. I was able to sit in and listen to a Tuskegee Airmen go to our Martin High School, which was awesome, a true American hero. Saturday morning, after coming up and freezing with everybody in line for transfers, I was able to go over to the Battle of the Books, sit in and watch the Barton and the Arlington High Choirs that performed here tonight. I was able to see them earlier in the week, and visited Little and Carter Junior High. Had a great time being able to see those schools. But, most importantly, I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention that we've got a birthday in the house tomorrow, Dr. Melissa Halbrook. It's her birthday tomorrow. She's going to be 29.
All right. Birthday. She's not happy with you.
Ms. Collins.
I had a great week, too. I also attended. Okay, got it? Very, now my mic's on. Very good, thank you. I also attended Crouch 4th Grade in the Reading Rocks Program, and what a great time we had. It's amazing when you go to these campuses and you're going to read a book, and I was scared, I had a book to read about porcupines to this 4th grade class, and it was, that was a fun part, but afterwards, we sat down and just talked to the kids about what their perceptions were, what their goals were, and I was absolutely stunned at how engaged these kids, 4th graders, asking about college and career programs and scholarships, and how to be better prepared for their next school year, and what kind of steps that they could take, and what type of, how they could reach their goals. We talked to students that wanted to be architects and many things, and they also wondered why we served so much wheat bread, but we explained that. We explained that. I was glad to hear that they are also interested in wheat bread and having a turtle pond, because they were asking such also just advanced questions. It gives me no doubt that these kids are being well-prepared at Crouch Elementary to engage in their learning along the way. Also, had an opportunity to go to the Battle of Books with Dr. Cavazos, and how exciting that is, that those students spend recess time, recess time to study books, and go and participate in this competition, and when they get an answer right, they're just so excited. So that was a great thing to see as well. We had the camping, the event for the transfers, and I was up here along with Mr. Hibbs and Dr. Cavazos, and I went down the line, because this process is talked about a lot, about what's the right process. Took my iPad, I talked to every parent that would talk to me and see what their thoughts were, and number-one request, coffee. So it was, that was a good visit. I agree with you. Ms. Pena, the curriculum management audit meeting was just outstanding. It was great to get that kicked off. Appreciate the work of the curriculum audit management team as they've concluded their work and they're back to write the big audit report. It's hard, and I hope this is the only time I ever say it, I'm so excited about an audit. So also, the FFC, I want to acknowledge the good work of the FFC. We're well into the FFC process this year, and what an attentive, involved group of citizens we have with the FFC. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Dr. Raich.
I'll go last, if that's okay.
No.
No? Okay.
No.
I'll do it. I was at various functions and things, but that's, I'm not going to include that in my report. I want to make an announcement regarding CBOC, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. We are nearing April, which is the end of a two-year term for five of our CBOC committee members, which means we, as a committee, will be evaluating new members to be placed on that committee, and that will occur in April. We will do that as a board in April. So the announcement is that we do have five openings that are coming due, and this is out of an 11-member committee. And the application will be online right after this meeting, if not tomorrow. And the district, we are accepting applications through 4:30 PM on March 29th. So please, if you know anybody that's interested in serving on this committee, we would love the input out of these committees. It helps us as a board, as a district, show a better transparent process in what we do and the use of our bond funds from our bond dollars. So it's very important. The committee's been very active over the years, and this will be the second to the last round before we conclude this level of committee membership. So again, we've got five positions that are going to be open, that we are accepting applications for, from now through March 29th at 4:30 PM. And then we will bring, as a committee, between then and the April 4th meeting, we will get together and vet out the applicants and bring a list of our recommendations for that new committee, those new committee members to the board on April 4th. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Popla.
Thank you, President Barron. I was also fortunate enough to be invited to the Crouch Reading Rocks event, and I had the opportunity to read to Mr. Torres's 3rd grade class, and what an impressive group of students that was. Engaged, extremely intelligent, very excited about being in school, being in that classroom and learning. Had a great time. They asked a lot of questions. They really did. Probably spent about half an hour there, maybe more than Mr. Torres would have liked me to take up from his class, but having such a great conversation. The funnest part of it was when they were asking, who was the boss, and we were going through the different layers of administration, but they really got a kick out of the fact that their parents were my boss. They had, I mean, they just couldn't, they couldn't believe it when we went through all the different levels, and the principal, and the superintendent, and the board, and then they asked me who was my boss, and I told them, well, your parents are my boss. And I said, and eventually, when you get to vote, you're going to be my boss. And they just, they were really fascinated by the fact that they would one day be the boss. So just want to give a shout-out to Mr. Aaron Pedales, the principal there. You know, we have an accountability system, and we've kind of beat this thing to death, that it does not tell us, really, really does not give us a full picture of what's going on in our schools, because I can tell you, there's some great things going on at Crouch Elementary. There's some phenomenal things that will not be reflected. There's some phenomenal things that will not be reflected in the current accountability system. They just won't. But Mr. Pedales, Mr. Torres for sure, they're doing an amazing job in that school. And those kids, to see the level of engagement and interest that they have, I mean, there's no doubt that there is a culture of learning and a culture of excellence in that campus. I wanted to make sure that we get that out and that we recognize those schools that are doing so well. Thank you.
Mrs. Pena.
Well, since Mr. Hibbs mentioned birthdays, I wanted to mention two that are coming on Sunday and Monday. One is Jamie Sullins on Sunday, and on Monday is Tony Pompas.
Wow.
Just thought I'd throw it out there.
Thank you. I'm going to almost wrap it up, I think. I want to thank Sam Nix for bringing out the Carter Moms. Special thanks to Kathy Trevino from the Carter Moms. If you joined us late, you can play this back, and I'm sure those ladies will all be playing this back so they can see themselves on TV. It'll be great. Talk about a sales pitch for parent involvement, that's it right there. Thanks to Bill Huff and the whole Fine Arts Department, especially the Martin High School Chamber Singers under the direction of Kay Owens, and the Arlington High School Colt Corral Varsity Men under the direction of Dinah Menger, Jason Barlow, and somebody else. And one more thing tonight, Amy Casas to the mic. You're not getting away that easy. Yes, ma'am?
I don't need a mic. Okay, I'm here.
Thank you, President Barrett. Amy Casas will be leaving our district, as everyone knows, to accept another position with the railroad company.
The railroad, BNSF, Rowan.
So Amy, we want to just take a minute to thank you for your service to Arlington ISD, for the students of Arlington ISD, and our community. You've done an exceptional job and we appreciate everything you've done. You know, you've been through all kinds of different crises and good times and things like that, so we just want to take this time to thank you and on behalf of staff and myself, thank you and we wish you the best.
Thank you. Really do. Thank you. Means a lot.
You have been the beautiful face of Arlington ISD on the TV for so long, and I tell you, you're perfect.
Oh, thank you.
You could just make those situations melt away, and that was so big and important for the board. We really love you and we're going to miss you.
Thank you, thank you. I'm not going to have to deal with crisis situations as much as BNSF, so that's one of the perks of being the director of corporate communications. It's going to be more public relations oriented, so hopefully that will mean not the crazy, you know, crazy hours, so I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Secretary, do we have anything?
Yes, we have for Mr. Hogg to Ms. Pope to include charters in the instructional model design research, charters and private. Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, in that regard, I see us with a stealing from the best and creating our own hybrid, and it'll be the Arlington model.
Yes.
I just really see that coming.
I do, too. How else are we going to become lauded globally by nothing else but creating a new standard?
That's what we all had in mind, and that's what we're going to get.
Yep.
Last chance. We're adjourned, we're not going into open call session, we're done.